Okay. Hi, welcome to the December 7th Joint School Committee Meeting. I'd like to call to order the Concord-Carlisle Regional School Committee.
Meeting.
And I'll call to order the Concord School Committee meeting.
Harry. Harry, welcome.
Hello, so I don't have too much to talk about this week. It's a little bit of a dull period in between Thanksgiving break and winter break. Obviously, there's a little bit of tension around the Omicron variant that I've noticed. People are a little bit more intense about like masking and staying distant and stuff like that. And then I would also say that just in general in the student population, there is a lot of anticipation for winter break. And I think a lot of people have a little bit of a hard time focusing on like their schoolwork and assignments during this time, which I think teachers have been aware of for the most part. I mean, at least all of my teachers have been making sure to give like a little bit of extra time and opportunities for extra help and stuff like that. Another thing last week was the start of the winter sports season, which is super exciting. It adds a little bit of excitement to a time that's otherwise kind of dull. And even if you're not playing a winter sport, it's like super fun to be able to go and watch games and stuff like that. And I know that Darcy talked to you guys a little bit about like the sustainability report that we put together last week. And if you have any other questions, obviously, reach out to us. We can find the information for you. And yeah, like I said earlier, there's not really too much going on right now, but we'll be sure to update you if anything changes.
Well, that's great. Thank you, Harry.
And the report was great last week. Thank you for working on that with her.
Thank you.
All right, public comment. Or a member of the public and like to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature in the participants tab. And no raised hands. Go on to correspondence.
Yes, I think.
In the past week, no.
Um, no, I don't think so. No.
All right. Peers and liaisons reports. Let's go around the room. Tracy.
Okay, so we had a DEI meeting. I'm going back to when we had our meeting. It was a week ago, I believe. And we have our January meeting scheduled. And what we do need to talk about though is after I did my MASC training, we really should have the school committee in its entirety as part of the DEI subcommittee. And that way we can all participate because otherwise well, other members that might come to a meeting will have to be silent. So our quorum would still be Court and Sarah and I. Maybe at our next meeting, if we could vote to make it a committee of the entirety of the school committee. That makes sense. And so we have a January meeting, so we'll again be doing some readings as we did last time. We'll have some discussion and Andrew's going to keep us updated on the equity survey. We are going to complete the equity survey as a school committee. We just don't have timing on that yet, but you will be getting that either from me or from Andrew. And then he is scheduling our subcommittee groups, but that will again have to be careful about who sits on each one. And that's it.
I don't have anything to report for the region, except to note that the CPAC has their monthly meeting this coming Monday, the 13th, at their usual time, which is 7:00 PM.
The Public Access Advisory Committee, that's the Town Cable Television Committee, met last week, met with a representative from Comcast, as we do each year, to take a look at Comcast subscriptions, revenue flows to the town and to the station at the high school. Concord is just embarking on negotiations for its 2024 contract with, or contract renewal, I should say, with Comcast. Carlisle has negotiations underway right now. I imagine they're coming to a close very soon, I would guess. And then on a very separate matter, Dr. Hunter and I have been in touch with Sue Curtin of the Nanai Connection, and more recently with Matt Lucy and Kate James at the Willard. And we've got a meeting tomorrow to try to put together plans whereby Concord schools can begin again some outreach with Nanai. I'll have more on that soon.
Okay.
And I'll just, I forgot to let you know, but the Concord School Committee met with the Select Board last night regarding the capital plan. And we both, Select Board and Concord School Committee, voted to approve the current long-term capital plan. And also there was discussion about the session plan for the town manager, which will be continued on the 13th.
COVID updates. Great, Hunter.
There's screen share. So I don't have too much. It's been only a week. So you can see last week's cases. It, I believe, is eight across the schools, fairly spread out. So no worries that it was related to school. And we've had one so far this week. Our total for the year is 71. Vaccination rates, we're eager to start collecting the elementary and sixth grade ones, which will happen probably somewhat before the end of December and then certainly in January. Last week's testing numbers, we remain very steady within 10, 10 kids generally. It really outstanding participation at the elementary schools. And Sanborn's up quite a bit too, so that was good to see. That was the one place that grew last week. And then I'm including a little more data every time. So this is, these are our test and stay numbers from last week. A little more spread out than the week before, since Throw settled down, which was good to see. And then briefly mentioned what's happening when someone has symptoms. They are doing what has always been the case, which is go out and get a test on their own and stay home until they're well. So we had 99 symptomatic students across all the schools last week, which says there's other things out there besides COVID, which we should remember. Destiny only put out a brief update, not even an update, clarification related to test and stay and nuances of that. If kids have just been vaccinated, what's the impact of whether they need to be tested? And a little bit of protocol there. And then next week is our second round of second shots at the high schools. So it should be in really good standing after that. It's been well, well, well attended and great participation. So pretty stable from last week, which is good news with all the different things going on and the high case counts in the state. So. Okay, that's tonight.
Okay.
We were going to have a communication go out in regard to boosters, if I'm correct. Just as a, by way of a reminder or an encouragement. Yes.
Yes, I thank you for the reminder. And no questions about?
So upon being fully vaccinated, all those elementary students who choose or who have been vaccinated will essentially roll out of test and stay the same way. So we'll have a lot more calm and peace ostensibly.
The demand on test and stay is going to drop dramatically once case six is fully vaccinated. So that's something we're looking forward to because we'll be able to keep kids in school without the the effort and, you know, work that it is to run all those antigen tests.
And then my next question is, did I dream a discussion that we had that was potentially going to be, that we were going to potentially be able to give antigen tests to symptomatic vaccinated kids so that they could come to school and not have to procure a test on their own?
Yeah, so I can tell you, we started researching that. We are not doing that right now. We could not find a school that was doing it.
Yeah.
Because that means you've got symptomatic kids in class. So we slowed down and then at the same point, the case numbers started to spike and we just held off. So that could be something we revisit. It seems to be.
I just look at those case numbers.
Schools have opted into that.
Just looking at the case numbers at Sanborn and CCHS, they're just so non-existent.
They're amazing and it's so encouraging to see the vaccines are clearly having an impact. So maybe down the road, we can come back to it.
Yeah.
We did slow down. We couldn't find a school that was doing it. Yeah, thanks for asking.
And can I just ask, fully vaccinated adults? So that would mean our students that are 18 and up and our staff. Does, is fully vaccinated the two shots or is fully vaccinated, so the booster is optional?
Right now, the booster is optional.
Okay.
Good clarification.
Yep.
Encouraged.
Right.
But obviously.
All right. Good.
Great. So I have Russ Hughes on the Zoom. I don't know if we can promote him or, and Ian Rames are here. But we, we have some information regarding the Baco, regarding the amenities building, as well as the repaving and lighting of the access road. Where would you like to start?
Why don't you go through them one at a time and then they can, they can form.
Perfect. Russ, can you hear me?
There he is.
Yep. Welcome, Russ. Thank you for joining us.
There he is. Excellent. He's back on mute. So, so Russ had a conversation with the town regarding the repaving. And he, I think, has answers to all of our questions regarding, can we jump on their project? Can we break it up? What kind of timeline we need to be on? Et cetera. Russ, do you want to, you want to, what you know?
Yeah, so I talked with the DPW Director and they're all on board with us. Just partnering with them and for the high school, the two entrance ways and the roadway in front of the BD Center. Also, as Jared just mentioned, some lighting and some sidewalks work. And we can combine it with their project through the summer for, to get some economies at scale there. And so it's, you know, we'll have to do some preliminary engineering work, which we already done. We have some of it. So it may be something we could get the town engineers to help us with as well. But I guess it goes out. I don't know all the, how the process works, but we just have to be ready probably around springtime. For when it goes to a town vote or I'm not familiar with that process, so.
Yeah, that's part of what they have to talk about here is what, what that process is going to be and if we're doing it now. So did it, did they indicate any idea of the cost savings if we're within, working with them? And it may be too early, I understand that.
Yeah, I think if I recall, when we met with the last director, it was like a 20% savings. It's significant. So. I remember that number.
Me too.
Said.
Okay.
Russ, can you speak to how the potential lighting and the paving are connected? And to the extent they are, what that does to our timetable for a spring readiness for paving?
When you say spring, do you mean fiscal year '23 or?
Well, I don't think we have done more than plug this into fiscal '23. So it'd be coming up pretty soon as it might be now. But if paving is, has to be coordinated with lighting and lighting requires more attention, more engineering, more pricing, when are we going to get going on that? What does that timetable look like? And let's go with a simple question. To what extent are they connected? To what extent?
They would be engineered at the same time. And I would say both projects would be done over the summer when school's not in session. So, because you'd have to, you know, run all the infrastructure for the lighting first and then do the paving right after, so.
Right, okay. Now, we were hoping the engineering had been done. We're hearing now that we need to do more engineering. So this is news as of tonight.
It may have, it may have been, so I'm not, I haven't really, I've seen some preliminary plans. I haven't really gotten in, in depth into it yet, so.
If I can just interrupt you, Russ, here, yeah, we did, I believe, when Rich was here at the time, the gentleman's name is escaping me, they did do some preliminary engineering work.
Extensive. They were here for a week doing engineering.
And I can, I can pull that up.
And be sure they're.
Yeah, it was before my time, Court.
The intent was for them to be complete.
Yeah, we, the most recent time we talked about it here, we were of a mind it was effectively complete. So to the extent it's not, I think we need to.
I don't believe it isn't complete. We'll double check, but our understanding was that it was.
Okay.
And then I thought this was going to be done the same time as we were talking about doing a parking lot up there.
Yeah, that's not correct.
So.
Not promoting a parking lot.
But I, I mean, that was the only time I was really part of the conversation and, you know, I haven't.
Yeah, it didn't pass a town meeting, so it went in high hiatus. And here we are, the road discussion again. Did we talk at all about any partial, can we do this in segments rather than all at once? I'm sure it's not as costly.
You could, but I would recommend to do it all at once. It's, or. Yeah, I would recommend doing it all at once. If we wanted to, like I said, partner with the town.
And I do think though that they, I think that is an option. It might cost more and I know every year that they do have paving projects. So we could probably jump on it if, if the committee so chooses to break it up. It might not be as cost effective to do that, but I think that is an option again because they do it every year.
I'm just thinking about the lighting too, though. I don't know if you're going to be tearing up the road to do all the lighting, you may have to do it all at once, but.
Yep.
Let's imagine we wanted the economy and the efficiency of doing it all at once. Let's imagine then that we follow the town's timetable for paving to bundle our project into a larger project. That would mean, if I understand it correctly, that the town's paving schedule that would hit our, that driveway effectively determines our planning timetable for the lighting and the sidewalks. So I don't want to get involved in operational matters to the extent of, you know, beyond just understanding them. What's our next move in terms of the work necessary for sidewalk and lighting data?
Aren't they always paving something though? Or is that not true?
Oh, it's seasonal and.
No, I know, but I mean, every spring season, they would be paving something.
They just pulled back a lot because of COVID.
You're right, but.
That's why their, their budget's what, $5 million or something? And it's usually two.
There's definitely been an aggressive paving schedule with the town more recently because they were behind and now they're.
This year.
This year.
Yeah, three. Yep. And the thing is, is you have to get ahead of the scheduling because they book up really fast. So that would be something that I think we would have to get it all scheduled, at least scheduled before it even approves, just so that they can get it on their schedule. And I could be wrong and Ian, please correct me, that the money, if town meeting does so approve this in both towns, that money becomes available then, not necessarily on July 1st. Do we get it? Correct.
Okay, that's assuming you're moving this forward as Warren articles in both towns, which I don't think you've decided yet.
No, not quite.
We still need to understand the, how long does it take and what are the impacts to our neighbor? Right.
Did they, Russ, did they give you a sense as how long the project would take? And can you use the road? You know, usually if they do a neighborhood, they do half the street at a time. Can you actually use the accessway?
Yeah, I mean, we're fortunate, we have two entrance ways. So I would envision it, you know, they would shut down one entrance way, do that, you know, open that up and then do the other entrance way after.
They have to mill it, which means it's still drivable, the whole, you know, you've been.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
What's next? So the next thing, so the campus tractor trailer. So we, we had a nice, good conversation about that. This would save us anywhere from 20 to 25,000 per year. It would save on, it would save in contract services, not only spreading, you know, bark mulch and plowing. It would also potentially save in overtime. One of the tractors that we currently have is always in the shop at the Mechanics Bay up at Knox Trail. And that's sort of on its, its last couple of years. Now, that is not, that is not the same size as the one that we are recommending. So, but that will, that probably will need to be replaced, that smaller one in the next couple of years. We're going to keep trying to keep it going, but that is something that might be in the general fund budget. So, like I said, it could be anywhere from a $20,000 to $25,000 savings each year, a payback between five and seven years. The other thing is that we, while it would be nice to have a shed or a hut, it is not necessarily, it does not need that. Anything I missed there, Russ?
No, I think you've pretty much covered it. You know, I think the smaller tractor, what we have, it's, it's more for like, they pull a lawnmower with it and it's more for smaller jobs. It's not really the best for snow removal.
This would not replace the need for contracted plow services too, though? It would, it would reduce it, but it wouldn't.
Yeah.
Depends on the snow.
Yeah.
And where do you store it? If it doesn't need a shed or a hut, where do you store it?
It would be at the high school. We wouldn't be using it for any other schools but the high school.
High school, okay.
Yeah, the 125 is just the tractor. It's not, that's excluding that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that 125, I think it's, it's, I think that's, that is a good cost for that. Do you think that's enough?
Yes. Yep.
Did that number once include the shed for it as well?
Did not, no.
It was another number?
I think so. And do you have any idea what a, because we, we just started a little bit talking about the shed. When we had introduced this, we never necessarily thought it needed it. What do you think a storage shed would cost? Could that be something that could be funded through the general fund for $10,000 or something like that?
I think it would be a lot more than that, Jared.
I'm not advocating it. I just know we looked at a number that did include a shed. Because we discussed it as two items, one number. And if we, if we are in earnest about that conversation, we're going to look at impermeable surface also.
Can you just clarify that?
Yeah, I, so I think I misspoke that this 125 did not include that, the storage shed.
And you would chart those projected savings against reductions in contracted services for?
For grounds.
Is this one?
Plowing and maybe even maintenance overtime.
So number of sources you'd have to look at?
Yeah.
Okay, but you only have got a couple of vendors for this kind of stuff.
We do. We have a great plow vendor that we got over the last two years. And then we use the same for grounds pretty much.
That's correct.
Yep. True green? Yep.
No personnel implications to put somebody on a bigger machine?
Uh, no. Would they require us, we, so the, a few of the guys have some special licenses. Would this require?
They do, and they have the licenses. We have two guys that have them.
And we are already paying a differential for that already. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Great. So next, and I'll have Russ speak on this, the amenities, start with the design, well, the amenities building. And it's all plumbing code.
Yep, so I forwarded, Jared, the documentation. I don't know if you shared it.
I just.
With the school committee, what I found.
They don't have it, Russ, so.
Okay, so we have a a waiver that can be submitted to the state plumbing board. So we can reduce the number of toilet fixtures in the restrooms. That, that work has been done. We just need to submit it. I also found just a sketch of what the building would look like. It would be located down in front of the tenants' courts in between the bleachers. So I don't know if, if you have that, Jared.
Can you screen share that?
I can. But what would the waiver reduce us to? How many bathrooms?
I don't have it in front of me, sorry. But it's.
It's, it goes from 44 to 22, give or take. And our, our hesitation in even considering submitting it is it presumes that we would then get locked in at 22 and we're completely unsatisfied with that solution. So I don't think we want to trigger a lot of events with, with any application without the.
We all did some different research. I can't find you a workaround right now. It's plumbing code. So that requires the plumbing and I know you were hoping for more creative options that didn't include plumbed toilets, et cetera, but it's a plumbing code that's holding you accountable at the moment. So I saw, I did find plenty of other school districts having the exact same conversation and finally rolled it into the building project or whatever with the struggle that you're having of how much it costs to build that kind of facility. So I don't think we have a better option at the moment. Go ahead, Alex.
Is, so is the town sort of currently being kind, sort of granting us this extension? And my question is, one day, might their kindness run out and they come knocking and then we're compelled to do this in a sort of swifter timeline or in, in according to their timeline?
They know that it's town money that has to pay for this. It's not like there's a private school.
No, no, I understand that.
I still would like to explore having one of those towable bathrooms. I don't quite understand why.
I'd be happy to go to an outfit like Clivus, New England, or one of these folks that do the composting toilets. We talked about this a week ago, to see where, where they have bumped into this because vendors have a keen interest in knowing how to navigate this stuff because this is their bread and butter.
I just don't think a 22 bathroom facility is going to fit in there, honestly. I mean, it's not that big a space.
Yeah, I agree.
I just don't understand if the footprint would fit.
I get it, but isn't that question?
Unless we have a two-story bathroom facility.
So 22 bathrooms is really 11 and 11, you know.
Jared, I think one of those layouts there, it does show where it would fit.
I think you scrolled past it.
Yep, I think I did.
It's, it's an overview. Well, okay, so there's the one showing the restrooms.
That also has a lot of.
And there it is, showing where it would fit. Those are the bleachers, the football field, tennis courts.
That was always where it was slated to go.
Yeah. For the men's room, you can get away with the urinal.
The men's room, you can get away with the urinal, so that solves your 11. Right?
But it does fit, so that, so that drawing does fit in the space.
Just barely.
But it fits, right.
Yeah, but people have to navigate around it. I mean, you're rarely going to be able to get wheelchairs by it, unfortunately, you know what I'm saying?
Well, but there, I mean, I would assume that you got to go with ADA code and everything like that, so you would be able to get wheelchairs around it, they couldn't put it there.
We're certainly going to have to put up better lacrosse nets, because, you know what I'm saying? That's where people stand, is avoid being hit by balls. I'm just, I think it has to have a lot more thought, and it's very expensive on top of that, right? It's over a million dollars to build a bathroom. That's a lot of money.
Right, but.
But it's just worth fighting with ourselves, you know, like if, if we're the town and they're the town.
I know, but.
We're at odds.
Tonight, let's decide what we're going to do. We only have to decide on 23, we don't have to vote a long term.
Oh, sure, great.
Right?
Yeah.
And maybe.
I think we have some homework to do on the first item, a tiny bit on the second item, and more on, more on this one.
Yeah, this one, it shows a lot, I mean, there's a lot of space for, for storage. Jared, can you scroll down to the next page, just to see what the, what all of the, yeah, so it's, I mean, so I guess another question is, like, is all that storage, is there a demand for that?
There is, we're renting pods right now, if you really want the answer, whether that's the, that's the answer you want to.
But we could put some storage up on the upper field.
We've got a lot of rentals out there right now.
Yeah.
Right, like football in particular is, is in a pod up by the school.
Cross.
Right, and not down by actually where they're playing, so.
But we're going to have to make some kinds of.
Decisions.
Well, compromises, you know, we're not going to get everything we want.
So I think you're right, you don't have to make decisions tonight. We'll get this plan to you to take a look at more carefully. We also need to vet the impervious surface bylaw and make sure we haven't exceeded that, if, if you would like us to look at that.
I thought that was a problem with the shed.
It is, yes.
Why would it be a problem with this?
There, there is impervious surface there already, so it's just a matter of whether you're staying within what's already there. If you go over that, you're going to definitely have a problem. So.
Might be compelled to do something, but not able to do something.
You're right, exactly.
Something like.
Well, you could get a.
Codes and town bylaws colliding with each other.
You can't get a waiver on the, the planning, the zoning bylaw, the zoning board can give us a waiver, if we present a good case.
So to your point, I don't think it's, I don't think it's part of your FY23 conversation, which is the timely piece of the discussion.
So assuming that we could, I think we should stick with the original number for lighting and paving until we have somebody tell us that we can reduce the number from the town, right? No, yes?
Unless you're sure the 20%, they should hold that number.
I would hold the current number that we have in there, and we'll try and get something before next Tuesday.
So I don't think we need something before next Tuesday, we need something before we submit our warrant articles, you know, closer to that. So I would want people to take the, the appropriate amount of time to be sure they're confident in the number, right? Instead of, we're not rushing.
Yeah.
If we decide, and we can always lower the amount. We've done that many, many efforts going up to town meetings, so.
You could all through January to figure out what, if and what warrant you're going to put forward.
All right, what was the next one?
Great.
Must have made it. So next is the turf field. And this is the estimated replacement cost and disposal of.
And is this when it needs to be replaced by? Like, what is the life of the turf field?
So, I've heard actually a few different things. I've heard 10 to 12, and actually I just read recently 14 to 16 years. I am, I did have a conversation with Aaron. I am meeting with him again tomorrow, which is too late to bring you that news, but in, I think, I think it's more in the 10 to 14 years. So that would put us right now in '26 at 12.
Good.
Is it use or ultraviolet that does, does the most degradation? Do we know?
I don't.
I don't.
It's a little.
It gets tears in it.
Yeah.
It's use, yeah.
We'll watch the Doug White field and see when they replace that.
Yeah.
Because they, I think they're coming up to at least 10. I know they got a, there was a flaw, so they got a new field for free. After like three years, it had lead in it. Yes. So.
You're right, we can certainly continue discussions on what they're going to do there to help us, help inform us.
They have a fund that all the use, so it's pretty built up. I think they've got more than enough.
How much use is, is essentially overland?
I would say that use is higher. More, more people lease, you know, like, there's adult, there's people on it till nine at night sometimes, adult soccer.
I agree with that, yeah.
Yeah, for turf fields, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, definitely.
But not during the day? I don't know. I mean, PE uses it, right, during the day, but not heavily?
Yes, in our athletic teams. It might even out if you mapped it out. Anything else on that? Okay. So this is on for a vote tonight, if you're ready to vote, and obviously you can amend your plan at any point. This would just give you a, an actual plan that you've approved for the moment?
Well, I think we should vote FY23, so we can then have our staff move forward to working with the town, so they know we're pretty serious about that, because I don't think we should go forward with that and then change our mind after people put in work at relatively low cost to us.
Yeah, I don't know when you want to have the pros and cons of warrant articles going to both communities, is what timing you want to have on that discussion?
Well, again, I think we should commit to something, especially if we're going to ask the town to work with us. I don't think we should.
I agree, because we kind of, I mean, we did that last time and then it failed at town meeting, that's nobody's, that is what it is.
Yeah.
I think you're right. Have them put in more time and then we don't move it. Makes sense. I guess I'll just storytell a little, because we did bring this forward, and it had the parking attached, so it is a very different ballgame, but, you know, you really have to get word out and get people in the room and help the users who are going to benefit understand the numbers.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I want to be.
Sticker shock to this project.
Yeah. That's why we'd like to get it down, and then.
Of course.
Less, you know, get maybe close to that million dollar number under, and makes it a little more palatable.
And I especially felt it in Carlisle, there's a different revenue stream there than Concord, and it, it's a big impact on them, so I was thoughtful of that.
Well, and I think that if, if you, I mean, it's a little bit different story now with the town than it was when it got voted down. You know, if we can say we're working with the town and it's going to be a 20% savings because we're working with the town, I mean, that is helpful.
Right.
Taxpayer.
They, you know, Carlisle does also benefit from the BD Center, and it's, it packs the BD Center, and, you know, I, I think it won't be an impossible sell, but I, you know, once, I think we all agree, getting the price down would be much better.
I mean, there's no doubt that this work needs to be done, and I feel like it's been on hold for so long, and I, I do feel like there's an urgency to moving this forward. I mean, you always run the risk of something getting voted down at town meeting, but, you know, to me, this project is very different than the middle school building. They're, they're two different projects, and we have to look at, we need to get this.
Oh, yes.
Right?
And when it, when it included the parking space, it was.
Two million?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's that.
And there was a lot of discussion at that town meeting that people didn't want the additional parking, because they felt this stuff, you know, it was really, it was the parking issue was really.
Yes.
People felt like kids should be biking to school, and they actually are biking to school now. Things have kind of changed a little bit.
We do need a road.
We need a new road.
We do. All right, well, we'll vote later then, I guess, right?
Yeah. Okay. Superintendent's recommended budget.
Thank you, Russ.
Thanks, Russ.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
Bye.
So I'll introduce what Jared's going to pull up and then go through with you. Tonight, we're bringing you the regional recommended budget. Overall, I think the high school budget's a quite level service budget, for sure, with one or two exceptions. Jared will show you some of the ways as well, that there's a complicated piece that I want to be sure you know about right from the beginning. The 300,000 you put into E and D, that then was used to offset FY22, is a factor in how, and it doesn't have to be a huge part of your discussion tonight, but it will be when you get to the FinCom slides. The guideline number being used in Concord reflects the additional E and D revenue. So that is somewhere has to be part of your discussion of what you want that E and D contribution to be. Our recommendation is the 300,000, not the 600, the 300, we, we believe is best seen as a one-time event because of the surplus last year. We worked really hard to bring you from $680,000 of E and D revenue my first five years ago, knowing that's not sustainable, because you're not going to replenish E and D at that rate. And that was part of our Moody's issues and everything else, was that we were draining, draining that too fast. We've now built up E and D and don't want to get back into any of those habits or patterns of how we got there before. So when we get to the FinCom slides, Jared's done a lot of work to be able to show you both versions of numbers comparatively with the finance committee's numbers right now. This slideshow is all about what we're proposing for the high school budget, leaving, leaving guidelines off to the side, just so you can hear more of what's, what's in the budget. Again, level service with some attention on special education and our programmatic needs to continue intensive programs. I'll foreshadow, there's an increase of out-of-district monies related to that. It's not the only reason that number went up, but it is a piece of why it went up, because we didn't have a place for those kids. And so there, there's a fiscal need driving it, as well as we want these kids in, in district. So I'll let you take it from there, and this is conversational, you want to go through the whole presentations first, though, right?
I'd like to go through, because I think a lot of the stuff that I'm going to be presenting on both the region and CPS, in a way, is redundant, so I might not answer a question in one slide, because there might be another slide that has that same information. So unless you really need to interrupt me, if I could just go through it, I think I should be able to answer most, if I want to, y'all, a lot of the questions. Great, and feel free to interrupt me at any time.
I will.
Great. So the FY23 budget timeline, right now, as you know, we are giving the first superintendent's recommended budget. The committee has until around January 28th. They actually have until that week in February to vote the budget. Town is asking, they actually are asking us the week before the 28th, like that Friday. I did talk to them last week, and they said, well, you really have until February. So our target, and it has been the target, really, in all of our timelines, to have the budget voted, would be no later than January 28th. I did call Carlisle, they did not have, they didn't have an answer yet for me when the, when the warrants are due, as well as the date for town meeting. So we are scheduled also to have our public hearing on January 11th. So that's an important date as well, because we get to put an ad in the newspaper, I think we already did, just to make sure that we're not doing that last minute. And then it's very important, actually, for you to know, especially at the region, when the governor's budget comes out. So the initial governor's budget comes out on the fourth Wednesday of January, so that is January 26th. That will be the initial revenue projections, and that's going to impact the revenue slide that I'll show you in a bit.
And that one, sorry, Jared, because last year that was.
Pushed, yeah.
Many nine months later, something like that?
Yes.
But it is, it is anticipated to be.
It is right now, yeah. So the recommended budget for FY23 is $36,644,994. This is an overall line item, general fund budget increase of 2.48% over FY22's budget. So the 1,000 function includes all salaries and expenditures for administration, IT, HR, and other central office-based staff. Salaries for support staff were the only budget driver in this function, due to an increase in .4 in HR and .4 in accounts payable. The need for these positions became very evident during the pandemic, and both are split with the CPS side. Overall, support salaries increased $68,346, or .8 FTEs. For something to be considered a budget driver in this section, the expense-type category must increase by $50,000 or more. A cost saving is the same thing, except a decrease of $50,000 or more. In this budget, I have 43 expense categories, and of those, 15 of them are salary expense categories. The 2,000 function includes salaries for teachers, assistants and tutors, the principals and assistant principals, our substitute costs, school curriculum costs, school supplies and materials, special education contract services, as well as equipment. Salaries for teachers are the largest budget driver in this function. They represent an increase of $510,874. There are some smaller increases in supplies and materials and professional development, but they do not constitute as a budget driver. The 2,000 function does have some cost savings in it. Our contract services have decreased $111,423, mainly due to special education. Last year was the end of a three-year computer lease that is no longer needed, and we're right now realizing that savings, and that is $111,000. Next is the 3,000 series or function, which includes our transportation expenses, nurses, athletics, and student activities. This function is decreasing 5.84%, mainly due to a decrease in our space, our case collaborative transportation costs. Driver salaries are increasing a total of $53,687, based on the FY22 budgeted amount. It's important to point out that driver, driver hours can be a bit fluid, due to some route changes and the need for some added times. The 4,000 function then includes all of our maintenance costs. There is only a small overall increase of .34%, and there were no drivers in this section. Fixed charges include banking services, the audit contract, sick leave and retirement incentives, insurance, other post-employment benefits, as well as our retirement assessment. Overall, the increase is .36%, but there are actually a few drivers and cost savings that offset each other. The insurance projections are up $68,323, which includes a budgeted increase of $90,000 for our active employees, but a $37,000 decrease to our retiree medical insurance. Also, the retirement assessment is down $36,924 from the FY22 budgeted amount. Fixed assets include equipment in our vehicle and bus replacements. The region's vehicle replacement line is increasing $53,311, due to two new buses in this year's budget. Debt is continuing to decrease. And lastly, special education lines are increasing $452,577, and we will speak about that on a later slide. So next is the budget drivers. So this is just another way to show what I just talked about in the 1,000 series chart. So I've identified $1,298,653 in budget drivers, made up of seven expense categories. The first, as I said before, is teacher salaries. Overall, teacher salaries increased 1.25 FTEs, and again, I will speak. And again, I will speak about that on a, on a later slide. Special education tuition's increased $452,000. Right now, we have three more tuitions in FY '23 than we had in FY '22. The addition of students coming in from eighth grade versus the students who are aging out also contributed to the increase. Support staff salaries increased 4.57%, again mostly due to the .8 increase in HR and accounts payable. Insurance, as I said, is also a budget driver. Salaries for assistants and tutors are increasing 6.02% due to an additional tutor FTE in this year's budget. Also, the tutors' contract is up at the end of this fiscal year and we will be negotiating with them sometime this early spring. And again, lastly, driver salaries as well as the bus lines are, are also identified as budget drivers. So again, budget drivers or cost savings or anything in an expense category over 50,000, and I identified almost 1.3 million in budget drivers. This year, we've identified four cost categories that had some cost savings. I've identified $554,768. Contract transportation is down $237,819 due to the case formula, which is based on ridership from two years prior. Again, contract services are mostly down, and they're down $121,229 overall. And this is mainly due to instructional special education contracted services that are in the district-wide location. Again, the three-year computer lease that is up in FY '22 is also a cost saving. And lastly, debt is decreasing. The budget has a total of $226.65 FTEs, which is 2.95 FTEs more than the FY '22 budget. Salaries accounted for a total increase of $799,379 in this budget. This includes every employee but our food service staff who are paid out of the food service revolving account. We also have some offsets in the, in some of our grants, but we include their FTEs in this number. Our largest salary category again is the teachers. This category includes salaries and longevity payments. The budget includes an additional 1.25 FTE increase in this category. The main increase is the addition of a reading specialist and half of this salary is being paid in the general fund and half is being paid out of SO3 and we have a slide on that. Then there are some small moving parts in other departments due to scheduling that caused just the additional .25 increase in teachers. I spoke about the support, the support staff and the tutor changers earlier, but there's a decrease of .1 FTE in the maintenance custodial expense category. We reallocated .1 FTE in maintenance to CPS, which just increased the FTE amount at CPS. So overall, this is a wash and just a budget really fixed based on where this person is spending their time.
Did you want to mention the language-based special education position as well? That's the other addition.
Oh.
Plus to the reading specialist. So that's the other request that's upping the FTE count is to create a language-based special education classroom.
Sorry about that. Yep.
And with the previous one, there was a funding split, Lori.
The reading specialist, we are funding, proposing a split.
Language-based is?
Language-based would be fully in the operating budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we charge approximately $431,297 in salaries to our grants and revolving accounts at the region, excluding the food service grant, which again is, I'm sorry, food service revolving account, which is 100% self-funded. We're expecting right now about $462,000 in our MECO grant in FY '22. That allocation is actually not even finalized yet. And the FY '23 application is due on Thursday. And at this time, we're expecting a level fund of 462,000. Most of this grant is spent on staff salaries, driver salaries and fuel costs. We also spend a small portion on supplies and materials and professional development. For the FY '22 grant, as well as the FY '23 grant, you can see the allocations that we put in for the salaries, which does include the DEI director, .5 teachers, the MECO director, .6, 1.5 MECO support staff, and 2.38 driver salaries. One of the line item budgets I had in the notes, DEI director in the MECO where I believe was the CPS. So this, so it should have been in both, just having a note there for you all. I know that might've been confusing. Lastly, we charge 50,000 of our campus monitor salaries to the parking lot revolving account. Special education tuitions, FY '23's budget includes $346,720 in out-of-district placements. Our circuit breaker projection in IDE grant offsets is actually projected to come in right now just over $91,000 more in FY '23. So that offsets the tuitions a bit more and in the line item budget, you do see a negative offset. At this time, we are projecting 36 out-of-district students at the region compared to 33 budgeted out-of-district students in FY '22.
We should bring a table of the history just for informational sake sometime.
So E and D, we started the, start of the year last year with $1,627,938 in our E and D account. We received $160,507 in excess of budget revenues. We ended the year with a balance of $587,864. We increased the E and D contributions from 300 to 600,000 to offset the FY '21 budget in June. But again, this is in the reserve to reduce and that is why we had to end with such a large balance. Therefore, I'm estimating $1,775,769 to be our FY '21 E and D certified number, which is about 4.7, 4.9%. And as you know, 5% is the max of the, of the general fund budget. This is a slide that you've seen before, but here's a chart of our estimated savings due to the early retirement incentive. When someone retires, they are at the top of their lane usually. And when we bring in their replacement, we try to bring it in around 75,000 or less. As you can see, the numbers here sort of speak for them, speak for themselves. So the district's OPEB fund balance increased to $7,569,232 in FY '21. Evaluation will be completed by January 2020. The district has a level funded OPEB contribution amounts of 550 in FY '23. That's our recommendation at this time. It's been level at 550 since FY '21. So the way that they do the OPEB now is, is, is different than they did in the past. They no longer give you a, they no longer give you a schedule of when your payoff would be. Instead, they now give it a percentage. As of 6/30/2020, we are 30% paid of our obligation. They no longer use the ARC concept, which means they don't tell you to put in 550. They, they, so what you try and do is you try, I think that 550 amount right now is, is a good amount. You try and, you try and put a number in that has the, the net position, you know, going, going up every year by three to six percent as shown here. Again, they no longer give a schedule as well. So being 30% right now fully funded and having over almost eight million in that account is still, I believe, the highest of any region in the state.
This, I feel like they're moving targets here. We set a path and then we say, oh, we're on the path they want. And then they change the way they approach it and yeah. So I still think we're in a good position. They keep showing it to us in different ways, which hopefully means it's getting more and more fine-tuned as they find different ways to express it, but.
Well, this may be an impolite way to put it, but we're kind of hoping that districts that have not been conscientious aren't going to be held harmless and.
Yeah, I, yeah, yes.
Today will we?
Yeah.
Prove the wisdom of what we did.
Agreed. Agreed.
Transportation, just a little bit about the buses. The region has 22 buses, one of which is a wheelchair bus, the oldest of the fleets from 2008. And as part of the FY '23 budget, we have budgeted for two new buses. We currently have 12.85 FTEs for regular runs and 2.38 FTEs for the MECO runs. So total drivers, 15.23. Healthcare premiums continue to rise at a pace greater than inflation. FY '21 active employee premiums increased between 1.5% and 6.5% depending on the carrier and plan. Rates in FY '22 increased between 1, 5.5% depending on the carrier and the plan. Recent estimates predict a 6.5% increase in FY '23 and a 6% increase in FY '24. And then beyond premium increases, the cost of retiree health insurance increases proportionally to the number of eligible retirees. Recent actuarial estimates predict a 6.5 per capita increase in FY '23 and a 6% per capita increase in FY '24. As you know, our debt is going down. This chart presents an anticipated debt service amounts to the final high school construction debt service payment in FY '38. Any future debt issuance requires, as you know, Concord and Carlisle town meeting approval. Here's a summary of the CARES Act money spent and encumbered to date. SO1, DESI emergency relief, two and three. So as part of the American Rescue Act of 2021, the CCRSD received $193,025 for SO3. The funds are available through September 30th of 2024. Fund requirements include the following. District plan to safely reopen schools. Spending 20% of funds to mitigate lost instruction time. Plan to as, how to use the remaining 80%, 80% and how that would be spent. You must consult with your stakeholders to determine local priorities. Assurance of how interventions will respond to academic, social, emotional and mental health needs. Considerations of these disproportionately impacted, impacted, including low-income families, students of color, English learners, and students with disabilities. The deadline for the grant submission was October 4th of 2021 and it did not require a breakdown of the allocation into yearly increments. After a survey was developed and distributed to staff and families, the following expenditures became the priority. So the 15,000 for summer school, offset to the current budgeted amount, and then 178,25 offset, offset. So what we use for this budget right now for the reading specialist is we budgeted 65,000 of approximately a $130,000 salary. So in addition to assessments, the districts receive state aid in other revenues. At this time, we level funded chapter 70 and chapter 71. I feel it's too early right now to, to project what the governor is really going to do before now in January 26th. I do expect to learn in the coming weeks after I spend more time in conferences and roundtables what, what, what the, what they're thinking. Excess and deficiency or E and D, that offset is back to 300,000 in this budget. At some point in the not-so-distant future, and I say this every year, I hope to reduce this to zero. But again, since we were at 4.9%, we are in good shape to maybe leave that 300 in this year. All other revenues at this time were level funded. So overall, we expect approximately $3,932,241 in non-assessment revenue. Assessments are based off the October 1 enrollment. On October 1st, Concord had a 77.41% share of the students and Carlisle had 22.59%. As you know, these, these numbers drive everything. The superintendent's request is $36,644,994. The first box starts with an operating budget, which excludes the transportation and debt. After reducing the state and local revenue that we just went over in the last slide, the amount to assess is $28,483,426. From there, we, we assess the transportation costs after we apply the chapter 71 reimbursement offset. The amount of transportation assessment is 90,931. I'm sorry, 122,135, sorry about that. Then we break out the debt assessment. Therefore, overall, the region's budget is increasing 4.77% without debt in Concord and 4.23% in Carlisle. Overall, the assessment without debt increase is 4.65. So I will explain on the Concord Finance Committee slides that Concord based their FY '23 guideline on the June reduced assessment. Therefore, right now, if you're using that assessment, we are $436,414 approximately over it. If they had based their guideline and the town meeting guideline of last year, the delta would be approximately $199,076 in Concord over that guideline. I have not received the Carlisle guideline yet, but. So as you know, the Concord guideline excludes debt.
I think it's worth noting too, as you saw on the slide before, the percentage of students was split between the two communities, stayed very level essentially, which is not always the case, as you know. Just a reminder that we had a nice stable year there, which leaves the stable impact to both towns versus having to adjust for shifts that are coming.
That, it was about .09 and what that did is it was about an additional $20,000 to Concord.
Yeah, that's the most stable it's been in my five years here. So it's a nice deep breath when you see it sort of, just everybody gets to stay where they are. Yeah, that's the most stable it's been in my five years here. So it's a nice deep breath when you see it sort of, just everybody gets to stay where they are.
So that is the region presentation.
Thank you.
Lot of information. First pass.
Chair, questions? Okay. Make it simple for me again on E and D. Was 300, we increased it to 600, and now we're going to revert back to 300 and effectively return 300 to E and D where it started or?
Essentially, yeah. So the, the starting place would be 300 instead of 600. Yeah. It was a one-time thing and there was actually, we did highlight Dr. Hunter and I in the FinCom presentation that we based the FinCom project on the town meeting assessments. And that's what we did all of our numbers based on. So, and that was highlighted in there.
Dr. Hunter, reading specialist, half of it borne by ESER funds, which, for lack of a better way to put it, kind of masks the future impact if this is more than a temporary ESER remediation move.
So that's why we're proposing only half of that be subsidized and the other half be in the operating budget. So when ESER drops off, you'll only be looking to absorb half instead of the whole position. And it'll make the monies last longer too, obviously.
Okay, so it would in fact be an implied obligation.
Yes.
Future.
Yes.
Okay. Because we wanted, we've got a cliff, but you made it smaller.
Yeah, any, any ESER monies that we're bringing you, we've got the plan for when they get need, if they're going to get rolled in because they're not supplies and one-time events. Frankly, even that became hard to find because many consumables we replace every year. So it, it really just trying to strategically manage it so that it's not a huge jump down the road at some point. It's one you're going to know is coming and can bet it for.
And this is to me that like, we've talked about in some of Debbie's presentations, providing this continuum of services as these kids for whom we've built programs to stay in districts start to age up. So this was sort of an inevitability anyway. In some ways, maybe ESER is making it a little lucky to, your point, sort of lessen this cliff or blow or whatever.
What I personally hope, this proved true with one anomaly this year, that we've seen as we fronted monies for these services and programs to kids, the out-of-district numbers have offset the cost. And so you aren't getting these big jumps generally in, in staffing costs or obligations because you get the jump, but you also got the drop somewhere else. So I would very much expect that as you've got a reading specialist and a language-based program intact over the next year and two years, and kids coming up from K8 have a place to go. Frankly, we're losing kids at the middle school even sometimes because they know there's no place to go. And we haven't put it in at the middle school yet. So as people get more comfortable, which we're seeing with some of the other threads of programs, I think you'll see drops in the out-of-districts, which is what we've historically seen with this one anomaly this year. So.
And so that language-based classroom, that's for kids that are coming from the middle school or kids that are currently at CCHS. And is there also a language-based classroom in CPS budget?
Yes.
That's an addition to the CPS budget too. Okay.
I think we thought initially, and Debbie's been a really big help sort of see the big picture. I think we thought we were going to build the continuum up with maybe a little more time to get to the high school. And as we looked at the cases and what's happening with patterns, we need it now. Yeah.
I'm going to preface this with two comments. One, I don't fully understand it yet. Two, I think we need more time than tonight will afford us. That said, I think the DEI director and a move to the MEKO budget really requires some very careful consideration. To my way of thinking, it redefines the position, redefines the strategic approach that I thought this school committee was taking.
Let me clarify that that is completely up to you. It, it should not imply a change of the role in any way. It was, it was a fiscal, fiscal approach because it's an eligible expense under the MEKO grant. But if, I suspected you were going to have that feedback. I think I said it to Jared last week. They're going to want to talk about that. So absolutely talk about it if you think it's implying a different role than what you created and what Andrew's doing. Because it is, it is eligible. It does not mean it's where it needs to be. We have other eligible expenses that you could ask to be applied there and put the DEI director in the budget.
Because we have MEKO in the operating budgets, the MEKO position, correct?
We do have, and transportation is usually the biggest one. Part-time teachers, yeah. Yeah, there are other ways we could be.
Can you shift that so that the MEKO director is fully funded by the MEKO grant and the DEI director gets funded by the operating?
Right now, the MEKO director is, and it's split between both.
Oh, it's split between the two. Okay.
What happened last, it really was last week, new MEKO monies came in. And before we sent out the line item budget, we, Andrew, Ian, Kristen, and myself, we worked together. And we put that with that new monies, then we put the, we thought it would be best to put the DEI director in there. But we still have MEKO people in the operating budget.
Yes.
So I think that all MEKO should be.
That's totally fine.
That's always how we've done it.
We can certainly do that.
And I think it's just clear to the community.
Yeah.
Who might have questions.
Yeah. I'm not surprised to have you say that to us. So we can just simply swap positions. And good timing, the MEKO grants due Thursday. Perfect timing.
We'll do that for both, just assume that it's CPS as well.
Yeah.
Can you pull out today or next meeting, public relations and legal? Are those fairly static or?
60, yes, the legal line has not increased. So the legal line is $40,000.
Now, we have a school committee section for legal and then we have a non-school committee section for legal. Am I correct?
Uh, we, it's all one line.
One line in region?
Uh, and it's a $67,000 at CPS.
We had broken out, previously it was broken out special education and school committee. And we, it's all legal. So we have it in one line now.
But we break out the costs and internally we know.
Yeah, yeah.
And public relations?
That's Tom Lucy's position, which is level funded.
Can you just remind us, what's the difference if you, if don't, if you, if you look at the, the difference from FY 22 to 23 in the actual?
Percentages. Yeah. Good question.
A little bit more about that.
Certainly can. So the, as you know, everything, when you look at the line, how can I explain this? When you look at the line item budget and you compare it at CPS, that increase is real. It is a 3.75% increase, whatever it is. At the region, you're also including debt. But also there are, when you have the $36 million budget, 3.8 million of that is based on other revenues other than assessments. So what you do is you first, you put that number in, and I can pull it up and it might, it might be easier to give a visual.
I have it right here if it's faster.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about the, the difference between if how FinCom is processing it and how.
I think you meant the line.
Why don't you pull your FinCom slides up? This will be Concord's version, obviously, at the moment, but you'll be able to.
No, the other stuff we went over.
So it'd be very helpful if you could show how they made the 2.74 and then how you would calculate it based on the town meeting assessment. And then what is the delta?
Yeah.
Between the two percentage-wise.
That's what's in the Fin.
That's going to be.
That's all they want to know.
Exactly. I still wasn't clear on that from the slides.
Instead of the 436 would be 198 or something like that. Is that what you said?
Yeah, 199. Yep. But yeah. So we could get the percentage difference between the two.
Just do the regional ones.
Region. You're going to have to blow it up a little bit. Okay. All right. So to find it. Okay, so I'm going to start with, does everyone have it on their screen? Because you probably, okay, good. Okay. So when they did, when, when they.
Just go to slideshow, Jared. Can you go to slideshow? Make it bigger. Oh yeah, it's kind of small.
Oh my goodness. See that? I'm moving back a little more.
Yes. Okay. Okay. So when, when, when they did, when they did this, when we did this exercise, I'm going to start with this one. When we did this exercise, we use the town meeting, the town meeting appropriation, which for CCHS in Concord, there's $24,608,750. And I'm going to use round numbers, but that represent, that represented basically 69% of the entire budget. Because again, remember, you're having additional revenue that is not part of the assessments. You take in the delta of that. So the, the enrollment only comes into play with difference as well as the regional transportation costs and the debt costs. So when I did the exercise, I said, okay, we got to make it all add up to what their assessment was of $24,608,000, which was, it was really like 69.143076. That was, and Carlisle's was, it wasn't, you know, 31, it was more like 26, 27 or, or lower than, actually lower than that. So what we did was is took all these categories and we figured out how much Concord's assessed portion of each one of those categories were. Then what we did, if you go over to the FY 23 preliminary guideline based on E and D at 300, I took 2.7% of the FY 22 appropriation. And that was their preliminary guideline. So if you added that all up, there, and there is a little footnote in here that it's, it's a little bit off due to rounding. Their preliminary guideline assessment would have been $25,123,866. If you back out the $3,179,377, that is the number that they gave us. So then I compared that to what our request was and what their assessment is with debt, which is $25,322,942. In the delta, you can see if they used the town meeting assessed amount, the delta would only be 199,076. And what's that percentage? Uh, that percentage is. That's not on the slide. That's what they're going to want to know. That percent, and I have it, I have it in my notes. But that, that, yeah, to get it on the slide. Now, how come the difference between this 24 to 25, that's a lot more than 300,000? The difference between, so it's, they wanted the difference between what the guideline was and the request. So if you, so their guideline would have been the 25,123,866. And our request is 25,322.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
That's the difference.
Okay.
Yep. So then what I did, and this is, this is what we, this is why it took a little bit longer than expected because I wanted to show, okay, what if they, what if they used, which they did, use the decreased assessment? Because we didn't do that work before. We weren't asked to do that work before. We were asked to do basically the, what we thought the town meeting assessed portion. So then what I did is I took the, the reduced assessment, put the appropriation. So instead of say 69, because we reduced it 300,000, then they were like 68.75%, which believe it or not, makes quite a bit of a difference. So instead of it being the $24,608,000 number, the reduced assessment portion is the 24,376,779. Then I took all of those numbers and I added 2.7% and compared it to what our request was. And then the, the delta of 436,414 is the difference between our current request and the reduced assessed amount. So that's why, if you remember the slide, it's showing that the assessments at Concord are going up over a million dollars. Uh, because again, they're using that reduced amount. I think they gave us just over 576,000, I think is a, as a, as a guideline number. It's, yeah, it's, it's very, it's confusing. I'm happy to answer questions. I don't know if that made it more complicated for you and confused you even more, but I'm good at that.
Regional budget's good at that.
Yeah.
Especially now that we've got two different sets of numbers.
Again, what's the difference between what our guideline and what we're requesting?
I've got this on this slide. The four, that's the.
Yes. So, good. Yep. So the current guideline that they have, which includes the decreased assessment, we are going up $1,7,972 at Concord or 4.77%. So here's the percentage. So 4.77%. If they use the town meeting approved one, then we are at. We didn't have it.
No, you don't have that one.
Um, I'll get you that. Yeah. So it's, it's really subtract approximately 236,000 from this. And we're 199 over their 575 guideline number, give or take. So instead of being a million something, we're only 199? Yes. Well, we're, so we are.
A million is the total difference. The 199 is the difference between the guidelines. This is the total increase.
We need to shave 2% off to get to the 27,000.
So if their guideline number is, I don't know why I don't know it offhand. It's, I want to say $570,000. This represents 2.7%. If you add the 436,000, you get the million. If they use the other assessment, you have the 570,000 number and you added the 199, that's where we would be at.
My instinct is they're going to use the lower assessment because that's what they've been asking us to work with thus far. And it's going to have to be part of the guideline discussion, how they navigate, how they manage this $300,000. That's my instinct.
I think you're right. I think they're going to say, your decreased is our actual.
Right. And I think the town, when we brought it up with Harashar, I think, yeah, I don't know, whenever we brought it up with him, to be sure he saw the differences. He felt the town had done the same thing because they also contributed some of their surplus to lower their number. So they're having, theirs is much more straightforward than ours in terms of how it plays out in terms of the numbers. But they've got a gap to fill because they fronted, they fixed some of their own issues last spring, very much like we did to say, we'll fund some of this and lower your number. So they've got that in a couple of.
So we approximately 2% off or I'm not really sure.
I can get you the exact. I'm going to stop sharing for a second.
Yeah, you can do that live, probably.
So we are, if I did the assessment at 300,000, at 600,000, so we are.
So we are, if I did the assessment at 300,000, at 600,000, so we are-
Let me show you a couple of these other slides, just so you'll have seen them before they go to the finance committee.
We would have been about 3.67%.
Makes sense.
So we are just under 1% over their guideline.
Okay, so-
So I-
We haven't, we need a better presentation tomorrow, because I don't think they're gonna get that with any of the current slides.
So we, we've built the slides that they asked for.
No, 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 I get it.
We'll need to preview it with them maybe.
So just, I thought you said, just said to us that they are gonna wanna go with their original guideline, not with the, what you're proposing.
But we, we, in this presentation, we went with their current guideline. And that is why you saw in that presentation, a million dollars, um, as, um, as the assessed amount.
Right, I understand that, but you're inclining, you're hearing from them that they're okay with making the modifications? Yes or no?
They told us to, well-
We don't know.
We don't know. I, I, I-
We'd like that to be part of the conversation Thursday, to be sure they're clear.
I don't think they know. I really don't think that they knew.
My concern is that we meet again before we'll really know the answer to that. In terms of, do we need to talk about cuts more? I'm just not sure.
So on Thursday, if, why don't we walk through these slides really quickly, just so you see, we can talk through all of what they're gonna see. They're gonna take this information to start to inform their final guideline. We are meeting again next week, purposely, before they actually set the final guideline. So I was seeing it as an actual conversation, where we bring to you the dilemma, for lack of a better word. We bring to them the dilemma, get some feedback from them. I think we're gonna get a sense of which direction they're gonna go, more than my intuition, a direction. And then we can come back next week and actually talk on that.
Because, right, why I'm bringing that up is, I, I wanted to maybe be more proactive about finding some areas where we might be able to make a few reductions, if we have to go 2%, you know what I'm saying?
I would strongly ask that you not do that until at least next week's conversation and-
Okay.
See what they, what they're thinking.
Then we don't meet again until January 11th, right, with a hearing.
Because what you gotta remember too, if, if you're using that assessment, they're only, they're only really giving us an additional, what? 3, 400,000, not the 571 that they, I guess they were intended to. Or you increase the E and D amount, which I wouldn't recommend. Um, but you really, i- if we use this amount, the increase that the region is getting is much less than the 2.7% if you're trying to hit that guideline. Um, I think we were extremely clear in the presentation that we gave in the fall, that we were basing this off, that the, um, the original assessment, um, and and I think that's something the committee-
But it is confusing. So we need to go Thursday night and make sure they understand the differences, see what the numbers are. And then I think we have a dialogue with them.
To pick up on, on your comments, India, I don't think you meant we're striving for, uh, hitting anything at all right now, rather than what we're doing is striving for the kind of readiness we're gonna need.
Yes, exactly. I just, I don't know.
Moves that, uh, might, might come our, come our way. I, I think FinCom has to understand loud and clear, school committee has looked at this, and that's all we've done.
Yeah, right.
Looked at it.
They are.
And we haven't touched it yet.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
All right.
So just really quickly, so you've seen what they're gonna see. The timeline is here. It's the master view of both budgets broken out in the categories that we brought to them back in the earlier part of the fall. It's what Jared just showed you. Exactly. This slide, I wanted to make sure you saw, and I did consolidate both districts. Um, really, they're looking not just for strategic objectives, but issues in terms of fiscal issues. So I've done a little bit of both here. So they saw all the strategic objectives come up again, just like they did earlier, but also named some of the big things that we always have to watch when we put budgets together, contractual wage obligations, enrollments for the high school, it's about the assessments for the K8, you'll hear later, it's about enrollment numbers and declining enrollment. And then we just, I wanted to be sure we named E and D and our use of ESER, circuit breaker being available. And then this, since we're on the region, this just breaks out. We're gonna plug in some numbers underneath the hun, the 1 million, just to show them how it splits out. It's the same as the chart, in a slightly different form. And then the overall picture, which is, this is the table they ask us to fill out, so they have it. And I think that's pretty much the rest you've seen, so.
And the, uh, sustainable growth chart was theirs.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I, from everything I heard, and I don't know if any of you saw, we're on, both the town leadership and the finance committee thought, the town was there last week, this kept a conversation really productive and at a-
Yep.
thoughtful level of cost and why we spend what we spend, and not just numbers, which was, I know, Harashar's goal, so.
I just have a question. OPEB, are we compared to the town? Because that's gonna be, come up.
Uh, I don't know that off the top of my head. We're both in good shape, but I couldn't tell you to what degree, so we can-
I'd just like to know.
Yeah.
They're 35, you said we're 30 or something?
We are 30 right now, yep.
Yep. So that's usually where people have been pushing or pulling on OPEB, is that they wanna be consistent with the town.
You can find out.
Um, and they might pull back as well.
Is there OPEB excluded from their guideline?
Yes.
Ours is not. So, so you know, yep.
Um.
Jared, could I have you return to the two new buses?
Sure.
Are those split, or are those two on the region side of the house?
So the two on the region, in, in-
On the region, all right. So I can only speak for myself here, uh, and say, uh, we are pleased with our efforts to electrify. I think we're gonna really need, uh, a careful look at, at, uh, the fleet and our capacity to, uh, manage the wide variation in potential expenses, given grants and not grants and so on.
Yep.
Maybe we can bring in our new sustainability director on this too, to have another set of eyes and ears on funding potential. I think with each increasing year, we're gonna be more reticent, again, speaking for myself.
Yep.
Be more diesel, streets of Concord and Carlisle.
I think at the region, you have a very different option, because it's subsidized by the state, and that hasn't changed yet. Um, so to your point, I think you could continue to talk about it at the high school, for sure.
I like to be conservative as possible about buying diesel buses.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's just, you know, maybe down the road, they'll say, we'll buy them back for you and give you, you know, but for right now, they, you know, Department of, they had a program where you could get rid of your 2006 buses, so we don't have any of those.
We did participate in some of that trade-in. Which meant we had to keep the old ones around long enough to have something to trade in.
But, you know, we are honestly the biggest mobile polluter in town, and I don't like that label. And they're not healthy for kids and for our drivers, so, um, as, as aggressive as we can be, I know it's, it's a financial trade-off, um, but they do, um, you know, there is a return on investment where they require less maintenance, and obviously, if we're getting, it's cheaper than diesel fuel to, to run them, I hope that, that is the case. Um, that we can, and I'm not even sure what we pay kilowatt on the electric buses. I don't know. Okay, that might be good to know. You know, versus diesel.
Right, yeah.
So the path ahead is, uh, Thursday night, and then we gather Tuesday with new information coming our way periodically.
Yes.
If you could put together a memo on Friday, just sort of where your, your position is, their position, or our position.
Sure.
Um, and then sort of frame our discussion for our next meeting.
We are actually Carlisle, FinCom, uh, is that Monday? So we're there with them before we meet again as well.
And you expect the conversation?
The preliminary guideline.
Given-
Okay.
This conversation.
Good.
So, so Carlisle's not where Concord is.
Right, this is, this is more likely.
Yeah, understood. A little bit ahead.
We'll just give them the school committee presentation. We're not gonna do the breakout of their assess.
If you do, there, you have an error in one of your slides. On slide six, you just have the wrong, you have to fix your totals.
On the school committee slide?
Yep. Not the FinCom slides.
On the columns?
Mm-hmm, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, thank you for proofing. Your, your head does start to spin looking at these.
Yeah.
Cut and paste, cut and paste.
So long, can't even see it anymore.
Is this the FTEs, our flip with the totals?
I got it, Jared. I know where it is. Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Did we get through everybody's question?
Any other?
No? Good. Okay. Great. Now, we'll move to SR3.
I think you touched on it in Jared's slide. I don't think there's much more to add, so we just wanted to be sure you saw it all as a package.
Okay.
The October application doesn't preclude subsequent decision-making on-
No, you can amend it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Action item. Vote to approve the capital plan.
Move that Concord-Carlisle School Committee vote to approve the Concord-Carlisle Regional School District Capital Plan for fiscal 2023 as outlined.
I'll second that. All in favor? Or discussion, sorry.
Just, are we clear that everybody's supporting?
This is the, uh, the-
Lighting, paving, 23.
Lighting and paving, with the idea that, uh, we've got a lot of work to do to coordinate with the town of Concord. Uh, the engineering still required, the interface between road and lighting and sidewalks, lots to do-
Good.
With, with the numbers outlined by Mr. Stan.
Very good.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, and with that, uh, we're turned to public comment. If there's any member of the public who would like to comment, please raise your hand virtually, or put your camera on. And seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn for reason.
So moved.
I'll key you. Give a second.
There's a second.
A second.
What are you gonna keep me?
I will second Sarah.
Is it worth it to you?
No.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, hi.
Good night.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Night.
And the Concord will stay in second.
Yes. Does, uh, anybody in the Concord School Committee request or like a break? Oh.
I'm okay, I'm okay.
Very good.
You got another long budget round, so it's up to you if you wanna take a break.
Let's go.
Okay.
Okay. So, I just, budget. The first is interesting discussion. All right.
So, middle school building project update.
So a few of us can weigh in here. The committee met, uh, last week, discussed potential additional value management or value engineering, and took no action. Uh, and, uh, we have a budget ceiling, uh, that has been declared by various parties, including the building committee of 103.7 million, and a budget that in round numbers is 102.7 at the present time. The, uh, committee meets again on Thursday morning at 7:30, via Zoom. And, uh, then we have a meeting tomorrow night that I think Alexa will speak to, um, on the sustainability side of it. And I think that's really the extent of it.
Yeah.
Sure, we, um, on the communications front, we are continuing our robust outreach. We have two engagements this week. One is, um, a panel discussion on a specific top, topic, which we selected sustainability. It is a new format that we haven't done. We're lucky to have Matt Root, who is a professional in that area, who sits on the building committee and chairs the sustainability subcommittee. We have, I forget gentleman's name, but someone from the Concord Climate Action Network, and, um, one of our professionals from the architectural firm, who will speak, um, on all matters related to sustainability. That will be tomorrow. Um, it'll be held virtually by Zoom. We'll have a link that will be out to our giant list of stakeholders, um, first thing in the morning. Um, and then we also, oh, I guess that actually is our, is our big engagement this week. We are working, um, on some additional smaller forums, um, or engagements with various groups in town that still keep coming to us, um, looking for us to visit their meetings, so it's exciting. We are continuing to do outreach on that front, and it's been pretty successful, so we're excited about that.
I was at the COA this morning for about an hour and a half with five senior, seniors, and they were primarily representing Concord over 60. Which is great, I hadn't, that's a group I hadn't connected with before, and a lot of great questions, and a lot of great questions.
Yeah.
Really forward-thinking, several of them, um, both educationally, fiscally, all of it, and, um, a lot of interest in community use of the building. As a group, they're struggling for meeting space regularly. So they're, I have a very vested interest in whether the building would be accessible. It's really great.
So we have, uh, the public hearing on the 16th, or further along in our agenda. We do have some items to go over that will be discussed at the public hearing next, so we can hopefully do some of that tonight, maybe some on the 14th. Um, I personally do have concerns about moving into the DD phase with little or no construction experience on the building committee. Um, the high school was successful with a construction manager at risk, and with a chair who isn't a construction expert, and definitely pulled that project out of trouble. Um, so I just, I would ask the committee to rethink the construction manager at risk. I think the investment is well worth the insurance to protect our investment of $100 million. Um, so I, I just, I think this is a huge undertaking with nobody in town, honestly, who has the experience to manage a project at this normity.
They did have that discussion though, correct, a couple of months ago, and they voted, they voted not to do that.
Right, to do it.
We, we had the discussion, uh, early last summer, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it was like a summer, early-
Yeah.
Fall, it blurs together.
The-
It, yeah.
Architect and the OPM, uh, even prior to any debate, were strongly in favor of design development.
Mm-hmm. Design bid build.
Uh, design bid build, excuse me. Um, uh, rationale, uh, how, how big a factor was cost, potential cost saving? Don't know. Because there is a potential cost saving with design bid build.
Yeah.
But there's also a potential for, uh, risk avoidance that, uh, can't be had, because we don't have somebody with that level of competence, uh, poring over the details every day.
Right.
And it will soon be an everyday-
Yep.
Risk management, uh, situation.
But that won't be revisited again. It's already been voted on and will-
Been voted on, and what I'm hearing the chair say is, uh-
She'd be like, revisit it.
With our, with the ambassadors on this committee to that committee, Alexa and me, bring that statement back. I just heard you say.
Yep.
Statement being, would you reconsider? And I think it's fair to say, uh, reexamine the pros and cons, at least for public scrutiny, if, even if it's not debated.
Yep.
Uh, around whether there's a change in, in heart, might be, uh, further understanding as we enter this next more critical phase.
Are there any, but I, what as, when I think about that, I think, are there any new facts on the ground that would warrant reintroduction of that debate?
Well, we did have a serious problem on our high school project.
But that was in, but that was, had been established long before, like I'm saying, prior to the debate that the committee had. That was a known fact. I think that was part of the discussion. I just worry, is it appropriate?
Your question, um, things have changed. Uh, construction costs and volatility in the industry has changed.
Yeah, that's my-
Just this last week, uh, uh, Newton scrapped, I think, fix of their 13 school solar projects for the time being, because they just- couldn't pull them off, given the industry climate, so I don't know if that's a good.
Right.
Representation of what's going to happen to us, but. But yeah, there is some volatility in the industry.
And we do have a. We do not have a town manager at the moment. Who is going to manage the bids. And that's my big concern, honestly. So it's just.
Well, and that was my first answer to Alex's question was, what's changed, the continuing struggle to manage the budget. And it has been tough for this, I think for myself, I think it's been a tough task for the committee to strive toward that hundred million dollar. Been common, been somewhat adamant about.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you're there, like you're there, like the budget is the budget, it's there, it's set, you're at one oh two point seven. We're going for one oh three point seven, so we're there at one oh two point seven, so I guess I'm confused of like, what's the struggle of the budget now because we're there?
So what happens is if you go into design phase, you go over, you're going to have to pause and go back to town meeting or reduce the project.
If that's the case, right.
If we have a.
I mean, I think we're, there are a lot of hypotheticals going on here.
Well, usually it doesn't go down, especially in this volatile climate, but that's, I hope it goes down, I love that. But I just don't feel like we have the proper experience on, on the building committee's side.
And there are people who believe it will go down.
That would be awesome.
People who believe the opposite and the answer is we don't know.
We don't know, right.
But I just don't want it, the thing to go off, right, the, not off the rails, but have to, but pause.
My next, my next question would be, there are budget implications to see him at risk then.
But everybody says, you know, the construction people I've talked to and people said that at the end of the day, it saved the high school project a considerable amount of money, millions.
But, but again, I worry, we, as we've concluded our value engineering discussion and we move towards the special town meeting. What is the timeline to reintroduce that and?
I don't, I do not know. I, I do not.
I'm just worried that the time for the reintroduction of this has unfortunately, in what I see come and gone, that opportunity.
Okay, I'm just.
Again, I'm just sort of.
As a, as elected official, I'm just very concerned about the lack of you know, losing our town manager at this juncture. And how will we manage the project, I think that's a question the building committee needs to address. At, you know, for the public hearing and for town meeting. That's all I'm saying, so.
And the select board have been quite public about their concern that we have not been able to recruit construction expertise, we need.
I thought we had made some progress on that, was that just speculation?
I believe there's been a lot of effort and it hasn't yielded anything.
So you're looking for some more construction expertise on the committee, the select board is.
I thought we had potentially found. Matt Johnson had someone in mind and had spoken with them, I don't know where that's at, but I, I know there was someone recently, very recently. Engaged, yeah.
I think there's a very short line between difficulty getting construction volunteers and the design to go, design bid build. I think that is why some of our construction experts in town have been reticent. It was because they.
But I think that effort's been.
Construction manager at risk and said, thank, thank you anyway.
So I guess my bigger question is if I could get, I think that the citizens, you know, before town meeting, need to get a really clear picture of how we're going to, how the project will be managed.
Well, that's where I see your conversation, your, your comment going is that this, this committee, I think, would in any event, whether you had made that remark or not, paused at the beginning of design bid build to say, let's get clear on process, how we're going to manage this. And what is the, the extra significance of that understanding, given the fact that we have some movement in the town manager's seat because he was so very instrumental to the cost management side of this.
Yes.
Yes, as will whoever's in his seat, even if it's an acting or interim. They're still very responsible for all of that, so.
Lori knows from how she's had to reallocate her time around this project, what's it mean for folks in townhouse when, when out comes a shovel?
Yeah. Okay.
People, people's lives are going to change.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Next, I think we're into the capital plan?
Yes. You've got that ready?
Throw it up.
Yeah, please. Erin can do it. I don't know how much depth, we've talked quite a bit about this, so I think we're just going to have a conversation, if there's any other pieces you want to discuss.
Yeah, this one really hasn't changed since we first looked at it. Does the, does the borrowing that happens at the town level happen incrementally as we determine we need it or?
Nope, oh, does.
Yes or no? For this it does, thank you, okay.
I guess I.
Just bundle it all.
Oh, I thought you meant that they, I missed, I misunderstood your question, okay.
So they don't front load the whole nine hundred thousand, Ian? It is, okay, that's what I wanted to know, okay.
It is, yep.
Thank you very much, okay, got it.
So I neglected, Alexa just alerted me, Terry Ackerman has her hand raised and I'm not sure for how long, but she would like to.
Do we do public comment again at the beginning?
Well.
You can recognize her.
Terry. Did you have a comment?
Just to answer your question, we do have a citizen with construction experience who is to come on the middle school building committee. Whenever there is an opening. So that is something that the select board is trying to figure out. But a gentleman is very interested, he has a lot of great experience in construction.
Let's get him.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you Terry, that's great information.
Can I just clarify that, whenever there's an opening, does that mean that there needs to be a vacancy before he joins?
Not necessarily, there's been talk, informally perhaps. The select board has the prerogative to change the composition of the committees and bring an extra seat to the table.
Yeah, I think one way or another it will happen. You know, unless some, you know, somebody might step off and sometimes people, as phases end and begin, sometimes people.
So they have somebody ready to go and.
Right, just need to figure out.
Add the person on and.
Yeah, they need to amend the charge.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you Terry. All right, sorry about the interruption.
Sorry.
So back to the capital plan.
Really any questions, I think is where we're at, unless you want to have us talk on anything?
So for Alcott, which is our biggest expenditure, if I'm, is that correct, ERU?
It is, there are some things in Ripley as well. But that is the largest.
Single.
Single one.
And is there, is there any grant associated with that work?
Not that we found, we did. Yeah.
Can we work with Amanda? Just to confirm that nothing has popped up or nothing new?
Yeah.
Does any of the Ripley work get brought to Carlisle's attention? The perennial question.
Yes.
Yes, I think we've been talking on whether there's a fiscal process that perfectly fits and the answer so far is no, but definitely it can be brought to their attention and it may require some other fiscal arrangement that doesn't currently exist, but it should be brought to their attention.
So there's no precedent?
No. No. Missed building couldn't be any more complicated than it is with.
Yeah, percentages of percentage.
Percentages of, percentages of, percentages of. Yeah, yeah.
I would just ask that in our, try to be fiscally sensitive that we remove the fifty-five K on the canopy. I don't know how others feel. It's a little extra. For Ripley.
Yeah, we had heard that before when you spoke on it, that's, I think that's fine with us. I have an umbrella.
It's for you?
It was for me, I have an umbrella, I'm good.
You can't get in. All right. Anybody else?
I can go either way on the canopy, I'd love to see it, I'd love to not see it, I don't really have a preference.
Well, I'm going to make an ask, this was on one of the prior versions. If we're not going to do that, if we could take that fifty-five and allocate it towards a inclusive accessible playground at Thoreau, which we had talked about previously and it kind of fell off the plan during COVID. We, we really have little people over there who can't access the recess equipment, so I, I'd be thrilled if you put that back.
Investment in my mind.
Yes.
All right.
If you could bring back. Or just admit, well, I guess.
They still have their money there Lori too.
They do, PTG has money from years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's significant.
Yes, more than the fifty-five we just talked about.
Okay, great.
So that would be a great.
Augment.
Get something going over there.
So fifty-five becomes.
I believe they have sixty-five or seventy, they have significant funds.
So significant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So fifty-five, up to fifty-five is available, is that what I'm hearing?
From our allocation, yeah.
With negotiation to be had is to.
Yeah, get a design, see what we can get for the design, the PTG has matching funds at least, I think, so.
Yeah, if you just confirm that before we make the allocation, we have time. That makes sense?
Yeah, it does.
We only invested that much.
I don't think, I think they meant to spend it, but.
They're very active over there though.
It has, it has.
I was working on that project.
I know.
I was at Thoreau, which has been like three years, four years.
Oh, good.
We had, at COVID, we've really had some momentum going and then we closed, so.
Oh, I'm glad if that would be a boost, I think that's money wisely reallocated.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. The Alcott Playground got funded with a jumpathon. And they did jumper, but literally.
All right.
It's a lot of jumping.
Cynthia, do you expect a vote for fiscal twenty-three only on this tonight?
I'd just like to confirm with the Thoreau. Because I think you're fairly sure, but just so we hear that there, what monies they have.
Yeah, I'll check in with the PT pros.
FY twenty-three is something that's attainable, I just, you know.
Sure, we can do that for next week.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
Don't like to do that assume thing. Okay, so I think we're on to the budget, unless there's other questions about the capital plan.
No questions.
Okay.
So while Jared pulls that up, I'll just do a few highlights of the CPS budget. Or the thinking we had to do going into it probably even more so, special education again in the continuums of the programs. The, the places we're looking right now to request extension of the branch program at Alcott, which is social emotional. Right now, because of the age of the kids in the program, it's an upper elementary program. And so if we had needs K two, we couldn't really place them in the same place, so we're sort of, you know, managing those kids wherever they are right now and knowing we don't quite have that all set to go. The middle school is the biggest focus for programming, both the autism continuum needs to, to be in place there, that is in the operating budget. We then need the language based program, which you'll remember, we had suggested be an Esser, Esser funded piece. Right now, it's fully in the budget for Esser for this year, I think we would wean off of that over the coming years before Esser dries up, so you don't have a whole FTE to pick up down the road.
And when does Esser stop?
Twenty twenty. Yeah.
Okay.
September thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-four.
Expended by.
Yes.
Yeah.
Expended by.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uncumbered by.
Cumbered by, I think with funding through June of twenty-five.
Okay, you can.
Pretty sure, we'll double check.
That's in the town.
Three years.
And with our. Okay. The same kind of rules.
Three years. So those are the special education pieces, what we're saying to you right now, all of those programs would need other support staff between a really deep review of where we currently have support staff that we might reallocate. And likely some savings on added districts, although it's going to be hard to keep getting savings when you're only sending fifteen kids out, so at some point, we're not going to get that savings, it'll be savings because we never spent it, not because we're actually lowering the number. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Eventually you're not going to get that because we're getting so tight, but that's good news. So that's the special education piece, in terms of mental health, we had suggested an adjustment council at the middle school to be funded from now until the new school opens and we can consolidate counseling staff. So we don't see that as a cliff with Esser because we expect to not continue it forward and consolidate. And then the third piece, just so you note this. With the enrollment trends, we are really, and this I think you'll remember from last year, although we did the budget later, so we had more information. The census numbers are down, the Nez-Zeck projections are down. Last year, the way we built the budget was to reduce a couple of kindergarten sections and then know we had contingency to put back. We did have to put back, this year we're kind, we're in the same exact place and the census numbers are almost identical. And so our, and we're doing the budget earlier, so the unknowns are almost bigger rather than less. What we did decide to do is move up kindergarten registration to January to try to get those actuals coming in faster. But essentially, we're going to take a little risk here again and strategize that if we don't, don't fund, I don't want to overfund positions and then be suddenly having too much staff, terrible way to say it, but you know, that we don't have kids to fill those seats, so we'd rather underfund positions and then find contingency to work through that later. But it definitely is a topic for us, especially at K, when we're just trying to get a sense of who's out there, so. I think otherwise.
Oh, go ahead.
Forgive me, so in, in a rough sense, then you're projecting a possible K reduction of two again.
So what we did this year. We're reducing one going into this budget, figuring that's manageable if we have to put it back, if not, we'll be, we'll be status quo.
Do you have two schools with three classrooms and two, one school of four?
We have two schools with four and one with three.
Okay.
So Thoreau's at, I'm sorry, Alcott's at three, Willard and Thoreau at four.
But I assume not crowded four.
I'm sorry?
Not crowded.
It's not a crowded four, and I can bring you all the class size numbers.
Always love those uncrowded four.
Yeah, we do love the uncrowded, our class sizes are running and this is where it gets interesting and we're spending a lot of time with the, and I'm looking at Kristen this time because we're, we keep meeting with the elementary principals to look through this. We're somewhere between fifteen and twenty, my ideal spot's eighteen pretty much, especially with K two, you can go higher into three, four and five and get to twenty or twenty-one or twenty-two. But when you're only talking three to four sections. This, eighteen isn't a choice sometimes, it's either fifteen or twenty and you get sort of stuck being like, oh.
I know.
A little bigger than we wanted or it's a little smaller than we wanted, so those are the decisions we're trying to work through and knowing we have to keep looking at it as things change over the course of the school year and then we build some room in over the summer, so. But I think those are the themes essentially, other than that, it's a pretty level service budget and I think that's a good thing, we're doing well with what we have and we'll let you get into the details.
Great. So this is just like the high school presentation, I think a lot of it will be redundant because the way that we organize CPS compared to the high school, because the high school is one location. We have five different locations and really six different locations at, at the CPS budget, we have Alcott, the three elementary schools, the middle school, an elementary location, as well as a district wide. So I sort of talk about these numbers a few different ways, so I think I should answer a lot of your questions. And then I'll take plenty in the end, unless you need to interrupt me, go ahead. So here we are with the budget timeline. So here we are with the budget timeline. December 7th, recommended budget, going all the way to May 1st, Concord Annual Town Meeting. And then again, the important number, important date here to know is when the warrant articles are due to Concord. And then the public hearing is, is January 11. So the superintendent's recommended budget for FY '23 is $43,323,170, which is 3.87% more than FY '22's approved budget. The 1,000 function includes all the salaries and expenditures for administration, IT, HR and other central office-based staff. Non-union salaries were the one budget driver in this section due to a .6 FTE increase in human resources. The need for this position became clear during the pandemic. For something to be considered a budget driver, the expense category must increase by 50,000 or more. A cost savings is the same thing, except a decrease of 50,000 or more in the expense category. This year, there were 36 expense categories at CPS compared to 43 at the high school and 12 of them compared to 15 at the high school are salary categories. So you're probably wondering where that other FTE went in the non-union salaries of the support staff. That position was carried at CPS. We increased that portion at the high school for the accounts payable position. So that's why the increase is .6 here instead of maybe 1.2 is because that accounts payable position was budgeted at CPS and the increase was the high school increase. The 2,000 function includes salaries for teachers, assistants and tutors, assistant principals and principals, substitute, substitute costs, all of our school curriculum costs, school supplies and materials, special education contract services and equipment. Salaries for teachers account for $1,384,002 of the $1,895,696 increase in this function. I will speak more about teacher salaries throughout the presentation. Another large budget driver of the assistants and tutors, which are increasing 294,624 in this function. Supplies and materials are increasing $60,039 mainly due to increases in everyday math. We do have some, as well as some, some reading, some reading instruction materials. We do have some cost savings in this function, including curriculum instruction, which includes teaching software, textbooks, library books and periodicals. This category is decreasing 110,243. We put back, I'm sorry, the 3,000 function includes our transportation expenses, nurses, athletics and student activities. The largest cost driver in this section is due to special education transportation costs, which are going up $125,196. The 4,000 function includes all of our maintenance costs. Last year, we negotiated with our custodial maintenance unions and that category is our largest, our largest increase in this function. We reallocated .1 FTE in maintenance to CPS, which as you saw was a decrease at the high school. Fixed charges include the retirement incentive, our sick leave buyback costs. These two lines are decreasing by a combined $142,780. Other small expenditures in the 5,000 function include postage and small liability insurances. Community service is the private school transportation salaries. About 3.67 FTEs are dedicated to these runs. Fixed assets are increasing $24,650 because we were adding two new bus leases, but two bus leases are actually falling, falling off. The new bus leases are slightly more than the ones that are falling off and we'll get you more information regarding diesel versus electric as well for the CPS. Lastly, special education tuitions are reduced by $528,459 from FY '22's budget. Tuitions are down $366,680 and our offsets are going up due to increases in circuit breaker and IDEA. And I'll speak about those in a future slide. So I've identified $2,123,855 in budget drivers made up of eight expense categories. The first is the teachers. As I stated in the last slide, the increase is 5.9%. Next, due to special education programs, our tutors and assistant lines have increased an overall amount of 321,000. These are all based on our current need and they're also keeping kids from going out of district. And I'll speak more about those in a future slide as well. Support staff total lines are going up $75,346 and that is mostly due to the addition of the HR position. Custodial maintenance increases, those were discussed in the last slide. Salary for principals and assistant principals are just a driver just because the total overall cost is going up. Overall, contract services are up 4.32%, but mainly due to increases in special ed contract services that are needed to keep students in district. And lastly, teacher stipends have increased due to special education training this summer that is budgeted on research and development, DEI building leads and an increase due to the need in mentor stipends and mentors. To offset the budget drivers, we've identified $781,482 in cost savings. Again, our special education tuitions are down a total of $528,459 and that is the breakdown. Sick leave early retirement is down 142,000 and the curriculum instruction savings are here as well. The FY '23 recommended budget includes 419.6 FTEs, which is, is 11.35 FTEs more than the FY '22 budget. We budgeted approximately $35,625,000 on staffing in the general fund. The only FTEs not included in this total is our CAF workers who are paid out of the food service revolving account, which is self-funded. We have about 8.5 FTEs charged to the food service revolving account. And then I will dive into some of the FTE changes when we go to the locations. We budgeted approximately $445,000 of our total CPS MECO allocation towards the .4 for teachers, .4 for the DEI director, .4 for the MECO director, 3.7 for tutors and monitors there at Alcott, MECO coordinator and 3.68 driver salary.
We can make the switch that we already spoke about with the DEI director.
We use our Title I monies on tutor salaries and set aside about $139,556 in FY '23. Lastly, we charge preschool teacher salaries to the preschool revolving account. We estimate receiving approximately $140,000 in tuition revenue. Here is the special education tuitions. The total is 1.5 and then the offsets is 1.1. Right now, we are.
You could see the smile under my mask with this slide.
Think when we were here.
We need to do five years of history because this is extraordinary. So much changing, so much faster than I would have expected.
So this slide speaks for itself.
It does. It does.
And also knowing that you've built programs to keep kids in districts. It's not that we're just keeping kids in districts. We've got built programs to keep.
And you know, when it gets to the Thoreau slide, does that mean we're providing one-to-one assistance for many of these kids in these programs, especially the odd bad strand? Yes, of course it does. They're here, they're with us, they're growing in front of our eyes. And yes, we happen to be saving money at the same time. Good stuff.
Agreed.
So Angel's offered, invited you all to come over and visit because she wants to show off. So let me know where you want to go and we'll, we'll bring you over and you can.
I would love to.
Some of our, our young friends. I'll, I'll send you an email so we can.
Here is the early retirement projected savings. You've all seen this before. Again, when somebody retires, they're usually at the top of their, their lane. And we try and bring somebody in at 75,000 or less. And here is the projected savings. CPS has 22 buses, two of which are wheelchair buses. The oldest of the fleet is from 2008. Currently, we are getting two buses through leases and two leases are falling off. We currently have two electric buses. The newest one was actually delivered last month. Hopefully, it usually takes a while to go through inspections, so we're hoping to get it on the road hopefully next month at some time. If not, probably shouldn't have given a date, but hopefully in the next month or two at the absolute latest. I think the E-line took three or four months, a number of years ago. And so hopefully we can get, we can get her on the road and, and use it. It's beautiful. We, we have 26.73 total FTEs at Concord for drivers. 19.37 of these are used for regular routes, 3.68 are designated for MECO routes and then 3.68 are designated for the private schools. So overall, the preschool budget location is down .55% from FY '22 budgeted. We have a total of 15.87 FTEs in the preschool program. 6.8 of these FTEs are teachers. While the tutor line is increasing 11.14%, we've had some changes in personnel from who is budgeted versus who filled the position. In addition, the cost of living increase was a bit more than budgeted. The contracted services are special education related and are being moved to district-wide location. That is going to be a theme throughout all of the locations. Lastly, the curriculum instruction line is now consolidated in the district-wide location for preschool. Overall, the elementary location is going up 9.56% from FY '22 budgeted. We have a total of 15.2 FTEs in this location. This is an increase of one, which is for a new curriculum academic coordinator that is being requested. Savings for this is coming from the curriculum PD lines, which you will see when we get to the district-wide location. In addition, we budgeted for a retirement at 75,000, but the replacement for this position was filled by an existing employee who was on the higher side of the salary scale, but there was a savings when we filled that person's position at the school. Also, the nursing line includes additional days for nurses and the stipend for the lead nurse and that is the reason for the large increase.
And the stipend for the lead nurse is just for CPS? It's not region?
No, it's combined. Each district contributes.
It's to it?
So it's, it's a pre-K to age 22 position. It used to be separate. This is far better to have one person supporting all the nurses.
The Alcott location is going up 3.45%. We have a total of 69.95 FTEs budgeted, which is a 1.81 increase in FTEs. Contract services are being moved to district-wide. Curriculum instruction accounts are going down 47.27% primarily due to the software account savings. The professional development line is increasing 13,700 for reading instruction supplies and materials. Teachers are going up due to 1.0 due to the need for a new special education branch teacher. Supplies and materials are increasing due to supplies needed for everyday math as well as for the reading instruction. And lastly, utilities are projected to go up 5, 5%. The Thoreau location is going up 6.95% from FY '22 budgeted. The request for FY '23 is 84, 85.84 FTEs, which is nine more than budgeted in FY '22. Due to special education needs and programs, our assistance and tutor lines went up this summer seven FTEs. To help support these programs, we've added an additional special education teacher. In addition, due to projected class sizes, we had the need to add another K section. For the same reason as Alcott, curriculum instruction and contract services are down. Supplies and materials are also up 9.8% due to everyday math and then the 5% increase in utilities.
Everyday math increases because of the three-year renewal. So every three years we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's frustrating that it's not just level. So every three years we have to come up with this big amount and then it drops to nothing. It's just how tech, just how these companies operate these days.
We wanted to spread it out in those lines in the schools.
Yeah.
Get the real cost. The Willard location is decreasing .73% overall. The FY '23's request includes a reduction of 3.86 FTEs that we are still reviewing and still evaluating our needs, including two potential tutors that may be following students to the middle school. Again, still looking into that. So that will, that accounts for two of their increases. Our teachers line is decreasing .5 due to a reduction of 1.0 in K for the time being, just again, due to the current, the current numbers. The speech and language pathologist line is, is increasing .5, but this person works in all of the elementary schools, multiple schools and is just being housed here in this budget.
Which line is this, Jared?
This is the speech language pathologist line. So it went from 1.5 to two.
Where does it show on the chart?
Oh, I'm sorry. On the teachers.
Okay.
It'll be teachers.
Sorry.
Because the teachers, I wanted to explain, the teachers are only going up, going down .5 and that's due to a reduction in K, but then an increase in speech language. So I just wanted to show that.
Okay.
That's the delta. And then for the same reason as Alcott and Thoreau, contract services, curriculum instruction and supplies are down and supplies and materials are up. The middle school location is up 5.36% and 2.4 total FTEs in FY '23. Many of these may be offset by S or three. Like the elementary schools, the middle school's portion of special education contract services is being moved to district-wide. Curriculum instruction is also down due to reductions in math and social studies textbook lines. The tutors and assistant lines are decreasing a total of one. Even with the increase coming from, from Willard. The tutors and assistants are reducing. I'm sorry. They're down one. Yep, down one. There's an increase overall of 3.4 FTEs in the teachers' lines due to special education needs. The budget includes three additional special education teachers and an adjustment counselor, again, which may be offset by Esser. There are also some moving parts in English, world language, social studies and science that make this overall a 3.4 increase. And then lastly, utilities are also going up 5% based on projections. So overall, the district-wide location is increasing two point eight percent and a total of one total FTE. Contract services are the largest increase in this location. As I stated, we consolidated all of the special ed um, contracted services line, uh, lines in this location. Um, the interim special ed director zero-based all the special ed needs throughout the district, and this was the result. Case transportation costs are projected to go up a hundred and ten thousand based on their formula, which bases the costs on ridership from two years prior. Professional development is up six point six-seven percent overall. Um, the reason for this is uh, special education related. Um, they increased eighty-one thousand um, for their special ed, uh, for their, for their needs. But the curriculum staff development decreased forty-eight thousand, which is helping offset the requested academic coordinator. The administration line is up point four FTE, uh, but uh, at this time in this budget, but no general fund costs. Um, because this is the DEI director, um, which is budgeted in the Mecca grant.
For the moment.
For the moment. We'll offset that.
Yeah, nothing.
Yep.
No.
Our tutors and assistants line is up point five. Uh, this is due to the need for a special ed uh, bus monitor. And the maintenance custodian line is up point one, uh, but is down at the high school. Substitute lines are up twenty thousand one hundred and thirty-seven, but that is actually because we reduced all the special ed subs in the school locations and brought them to this location. This is not an increase um, to our sub-lines. It was just all moved and put in this one line. Salary support staff is up five percent, but not any FTEs. Uh, if you remember last year, we budgeted a one point O CPS Mecca coordinator at the end of the budget cycle last year. Uh, for approximately fifty-three thousand dollars. Twenty-six point five came out of the Mecca grant, um, and the rest came out of the general fund. But we didn't fill that position, so we carried a full FTE, but half the salary in the budget. In addition, we did not budget a, for a point one transportation clerical uh, position this year. Therefore, these positions add up to a minus one point one FTE. But we did add a point six HR support staff, a point two accounts payable and a point three DEI interim, intern. This adds up to one point one FTE. For these reasons, the increase is five percent. Our teachers category line is up fifteen point three-four, but no FTEs. Uh, we reduced point six um, district-wide speech, but we increased the CPS side of the special education coordinator. Um, point six because this person is now K through eight. Um, when she was budgeted last year as a K through twelve, um, she was budgeted in partly in the high school. So this is not an overall added position, but an increase to CPS and a decrease to CCRSD. I mean, decrease, I say decrease. Um, also K to five grade level chairs are now district-wide and moved out of their locations. So that's a wash, but it's showing up as an increase in district-wide. Uh, and that was an addition of twenty-seven thousand in this category. Sick leave and early retirement lines are decreasing a hundred and forty-two thousand. You can see the special education lines are shown here, uh, and the decrease there. Uh, the mentoring, special ed research and development training in the DEI leads account for the increase in these stipends. Here's a summary of uh, what's been spent or encumbered to date. And as part of the American Rescue of twenty-twenty-one, CPS received nine hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and forty dollars for S R three. The funds are available through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Fund requirements include district plan to safely reopen schools, spending twenty percent of the funds to mitigate lost instruction time. Plan as to how to use the remaining eighty percent. Consultation with stakeholders to determine local priorities. Assurance of how the interventions will respond to academic, social, emotional and mental health needs. Consideration of those uh, disproportionately impacted, including low-income families, students of color, English language learners, English learners and students with disabilities. Uh, the deadline for the grant submission was October fourth. It does not require a breakdown of the allocation into yearly increments. Uh, after a survey was developed and distributed to staff and families, the following expenditures became the priority. And that is the CPS presentation. All right. Questions, comments?
I had a couple of special ed related questions. So the tuitions um, at CPS. Are they just moving on to the region? So the decrease in the tuitions at CPS, is that because those kids are moving from eighth grade up?
It shouldn't be. We usually roll them up when we budget.
Okay.
Occasionally, things don't go as planned and something rolls when it shouldn't, when we didn't think it was going to, but
Okay.
We, we roll them up now, so we budget for where they'll, they'll be in the fall.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the um, the nine additional FTEs at Thoreau, so there's a special ed teacher at K section, are the other FTEs, are they tutors?
Assistants.
Assistants, okay.
All assistants.
They're all assistants. And then um, the last one is just the, the special ed coordinator K to eight. So is, that's a change in, in the whole overall job. And I'm assuming was that because Deb's reorged things a little bit or?
It's, that's my show.
Yeah.
So we had budgeted, we created the position last year, brought it to the committee and asked for a need for an in-house. We had an out-of-district coordinator, we needed an in-house district coordinator.
Right.
What we learned in that April to June period was we really needed, because once they get to the high school, it's just communicating with the high school, not managing the programs the same way.
Right.
It really is a K eight position.
Okay.
So really what we did was take the ask from last spring and label it and budget it according to what the role really is.
Okay.
It's not, it's K twelve, but it's really K, K eight to nine.
To nine, transition eight to nine.
Backs off.
Okay, okay.
Just being more accurate.
Okay.
The role really is. And to a large extent, she's been, because Laura Brand is so strong at the middle school. She's even focusing a lot on K five.
K five, okay. And probably the transition from five to six.
Correct.
Okay.
Indeed. We've got this nice continuum of special education leadership now with her coordination, then the, the position at the middle school, Laura, and then then the um, administrator at the high school, like Debbie mentioned, proving to be really effective.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, good questions.
I have one not particularly significant question. I noticed um, the field trip line has, was zeroed out at CMS. But I did notice, as someone with kids in elementary school, we've resurrected at least to the STEAM lab. Um, some, which my kids love. We've resurrected some of those things. Is, is this um, you know, zeroing out of this expenditure, an anticipated continuation of a COVID sort of oriented structure? Or is there just not a need at the middle school or it's?
It's COVID.
Huh?
Yeah.
It's COVID.
COVID.
So we're anticipating having, uh, yeah, okay.
And if that changes, we can probably reallocate funds as things.
They're not significant, which is why I didn't think it was a big deal.
It's three thousand.
Yes, yeah, they're in.
Yeah.
Nonetheless.
So they're, they're going on trips to outdoor places right now and to the STEAM lab.
Yep.
So we're better than we were a year ago.
Yeah. Um, I just didn't know because I, I personally have experienced the resurrection of at least um,
Yes.
Field trips.
Yes.
If it was something different.
And the CMS field trips typically are to the courthouse and they're to places that aren't allowing visitors in.
Right, right.
The, the STEAM lab also uh, involved some PD changes as well, am I correct?
Hmm, yep. One thing that we're also hoping to do for um, the middle school is to start bringing the kids to this.
And it was, that's an FTE change if I'm correct? No, it's not. Okay.
So a team would bring their students here and we would rotate them through, just starting to work on how we would.
I, I want to go back to the Thoreau uh, special ed FTE changes. It's a change fiscal twenty-two budget versus fiscal twenty-three budget. Is it, is it a change in actual meaning? Have we had to bring in these people in the interim?
A little bit of both. Um, so for special ed, we had the two settings for the autism program. We really needed a third. The kids, just too many kids. So we did do that over the summer. Um, with some of our contingencies and the assistance that required. And although we reallocated people too, we don't just add on one-to-one if we can find them elsewhere. Um, the K position, we waited that out as long as we could and then, then did that. So um, the assistants, however, didn't all fill in already. We're projecting forward a little bit too. So it's a little bit of both. There's a lot of moving pieces with those programs. And we've added the enrollment complication on top of it.
Um, the DEI intern, I don't know if the timing on the DEI subcommittee and the timing on budget preparation is going to sync up. Um, so I would simply point to Tracy and Lori and say, to what extent can that sync up?
And we can think about adding that probably to our January agenda.
Yep. So you hear, you know, the snapshot version of where Andrew's vision has gone. And I think we've all agreed, there had to be some more leadership to, to the work. And his idea, which I think is a great starting point, is to stipend a lead teacher at each school and really, you know, build a team he can work with. And I um, think we use that model very successfully. I look at Kristen because she uses it in a couple of different ways. And I think that's a successful model, partly because we empower teachers to then work with other teachers. And it's not just leaders to teachers, it's teacher to teacher. Um, so we're excited for that. And then the intern is meant to be a potential recruitment pipeline opportunity.
And are any of the teachers involved in the training, the DEI training at um, um, I'm going to get the name of the college wrong in Newton. Um, something came across.
William James.
William James, yes.
Actually, Andrew's in that.
Okay.
Yeah, we work with them and a number, I was actually just on the phone with them yesterday about some of this work. So we were interfacing with them in a couple of different places. He goes to the roundtable they host.
Hmm.
Um, he's talked with them about the program they're running for DEI directors, which is different than the roundtable. So yeah, they're doing a great job.
Right, and I, I thought they had a program for current teachers too.
I'll have to look.
Yeah, so I didn't know if anyone was involved in that.
Not right now. Right, right now, we have two teachers who are training to be trainers
Okay.
For our ideas workshop, which is becoming a more culturally competent educator.
And one at the region and one that Yeah.
Thank you.
So um, tell me a little, I'm a little confused because Court just asked about the STEAM lab, but we're, you, so can you tell me a little more about the curriculum center specialists? So this is where
Yeah.
We consolidated funds previously supported a science specialist and a stipended social studies position. Are we not going to have those anymore?
We have some retirements.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's just, it's not clear.
So the hope is to uh, sort of reorganize those positions so that we can uh, spend about the same amount of money, but um, get a little more. Um, because our science, elementary science curriculum is done, our STEAM curriculum for K to five is done. And our social studies curriculum for K to five will be done. And so all of those will just need some tweaks after that. They don't need the big construction that they have been going through for the last five years since new standards came out in both science and social studies.
Hmm.
And then um,
Fairly significant though, as you know.
Oh, the
Yeah, social studies, because our frameworks, I haven't really caught up. I've been looking at them, so a little out of date.
Social studies for elementary, um, were all done, all five strands, except our last is putting in the economics strand, which is hilarious.
Hmm.
Planning for, you know, kindergartners to buy and sell things
Yes.
In the classroom. Um, so, but very important. So with those consolidations and those curriculums kind of being close to done.
Hmm.
Um, we want to add uh, someone who can really help us look at big data.
Hmm.
Or uh, free K to twelve, now that we have all these screeners in place and we're tracking all kids' progress. We want to do it at the district level, not just at the uh, school level. Uh, and so see which interventions have worked with which students and um, make sure that we're helping all our struggling learners.
So this is, how many FTEs? I'm just trying to understand. One?
It's just one person. Yeah.
But that, so you, okay, there, that's a lot.
There isn't a, it, it is.
I mean, you're looking for the
Yeah, she converted one position last year. So one per, one person's already started to take on this reorganization. This will be the second to hopefully round it out and give us a, a wider berth here. You know, it's, every district struggles with the elementary leadership because everybody teaches everything and trying to support teachers that way.
Yeah, okay. And then, uh, I neglected this at the region. So I just went through software. We significantly reduced elementary K five software. I did the math at Concord Middle School and it went up slightly similar to the region. So
We just redistributed the cost. The cost actually went significantly down by thirty percent um, for software. But what we did was all the ubiquitous software that's used in every subject area.
Hmm.
We parsed out into, you know, math, into social studies, into English, their portion of it. So um, that was one big change that we did. And the other one that we did was all the software that we had been field testing. Uh, which comes out of a district budget. When something's being, being piloted, we then uh, adopted it, moved to adopted the teacher committee, and then we put it into their budget. So the big one that you'll see uh, in, in all the budgets is R three sixty is our screener for reading and math.
Hmm.
It used to be in a pilot budget, um, and now it's right in the um, reading and math budgets at the elementary, English and math at the middle school and the high school.
But though, so I'm just saying, the, the elementary, I just looked at it, was, K eight was reduced by forty percent or something. But I looked at the middle, the middle school department, but software budgets are up a little.
Something else is probably, is down. Not probably, something else is down.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there doesn't say software.
Yeah.
So that's the thing is like, that's, but in the, the high school, again, the software department lines are all up.
Because there's no more overall software budget. They're all in the departments now.
Right, it's just that they're, in terms of equity, you know, like those studies in English have significant budgets and then like math, it's like
There's not as much math software out there.
Yeah, it's just like twenty-five thousand versus three. It just seems a little
And if you look at the high school and middle school lists of software that we cut, thank goodness, we got to cut all the math software that we use during
Yep.
Virtual teaching because it's not that great.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then, and then, so currently in HR, we just have one FTE?
No, and part of, I was going to talk to you about three times and I didn't with the Ripley stuff. Um, we really, we had tried to reduce from where we were as we have had attrition.
Hmm.
So when attrition happened, really Jared would try to relook and reorganize between his business office and HR and keep, try to reduce some positions.
Okay.
And that proved really hard to make work. So we've piecemealed back. I think we're probably leveled to where we were. Yeah, so
So, so what, how many?
HR has uh, full-time administrator and two support people.
Currently?
Currently, actively coming.
Oh, so we're not adding any FTEs?
Well, they, they were after the fact. So we, we hired
Reallocated.
Reallocated.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then in a
Three, three actual represents an increase over last year's budget, not an increase over personnel in the office now.
Correct.
Right. And then, so then in accounting, we have how many?
Accounting, it, we reduced it
Hmm.
Two years, a year ago, and now we brought it back. We had a, we had a resignation that was a point
We had a, we had a resignation that was a point six this summer. And then we, it was trouble, we were having trouble doing it, the 1.6. And then we, we brought back the point four that is split. And now we have a full 1.0, two full 1.0s in AP, which is what I had when I.
So what in total?
The total in the business office is two payroll, two accounts payable, an assistant business manager, an accountant, myself.
So, or is everybody full time? I'm just trying to.
Oh, yeah, everyone, yeah.
You've got six.
Now they are.
You have six FTEs?
Seven, including me.
Okay.
And that, that's going to work. So that should be stable.
And that again is seven, actual seven continuing.
Yeah.
And the budget, is it really clear on that? I can't tell, but maybe it's just people around.
There's been a lot of moving pieces. I'm not surprised you can't tell. I think that's why he was so specific in the description.
With, and the reason I was only because if you, if you saw a zero FTE increase but saw an eight percent, I felt like I had to explain that. Maybe I shouldn't. I felt like I had to, yeah. And that's, but it gets, it gets complicated because I'm very literal when I do the FTEs.
I like that about you.
So I think that, I think your notes are narrative.
A little crazy.
Say that currently, currently we have this many FTEs. We're not asking for an additional.
No, but I wanted to show it because it's different from the FY22.
Yeah. It just seems like, yeah, I mean, two is, two, an HR director and two FTEs is very nice. So.
Yes, we're nice and stable there now.
So just sort of on that theme, the one thing I would like to see a little more of regarding DEI, especially as we're trying to increase our staff, is, is real investment in specific objectives with programs, things that, you know, might cost money, where we can do a more nationwide kind of searching for, because the pool here, as I would say, is probably really limited.
You're talking about hiring, not de, hiring.
Hiring, staff, not just teachers, all staff.
We joined a couple of different places last year that, I don't know the names.
I don't need everything tonight, but it's just food for thought, just something to think about.
Yeah, no, you want a widespread reach.
Because it's going to take, it's, it's going to be a slog, like it's going to be hard to do. And I think, you know, I saw that department, they said they even have mortgage assistance programs. I think we just have to, you know, pull out all stops and trying to attract people to a relatively expensive area of the country to live in. Especially we're thinking about getting, encouraging people to relocate this area, probably, probably looks fairly daunting. But if we can figure out any way to make it less so, I think that would be great. I mean.
Your salary schedule helped someone do that this summer, just so you know.
And then just.
Person of color. Yes.
And then, just to let you know what we're already doing, we have three search nationwide, nationwide search organizations that we work with that tracks faculty members of color and they feed directly into our school spring and they talk to each other. We also have literal people going through resumes on the line, not looking for candidates to find us. We're going to find the candidates. And it really worked out last year because 30% of the staff that we hired last year identify as people of color.
Right. And as you know, you need to get a little momentum so that people feel like it's a welcoming community. So I just, I feel like if we could just get a few more, just extra investment in getting that momentum going that, you know, we might be able to get a.
Another investment, I'm not sure if it came out clearly, but if you look at the reading budgets in every single one of the schools, there's a pretty big investment in getting more literature that reflects our student body. Yeah, actual books, like hard copy books.
That's awesome.
Yeah, but I mean, you can see at the high school, it's $11,000 because we're talking, we have a review committee to look at new core texts, at least one in every grade. So that, that's significant. And that's true literally at every level.
Excellent. That is, that is wonderful.
And I do think it's also important to note that we've talked at, at the DEI committee level. When Dr. Martin says, you know, people are recognizing Concord as a place that people of color want to come to because, you know, we are leading the way in, in some areas and that's just important to continue to notice. You know, and Lori's been tapped for, you know, Massachusetts, you know, roundtables and committees and, you know. So, so I think it's really important that we continue to do this work. And I think that our reputation is going to help attract more candidates of color.
Good. That's awesome to hear.
Kristen, with the three firms, is it like a subscription service where we just pay in once?
Yeah. So we did all three of them new last year. And then we looked at the returns and two of them were not great, you know, but one was really good. So we focused on that one and did this year a higher level of engagement with them.
With the one.
Yeah.
Okay. Cynthia, my, my perspective on the DEI is a little bit different. And I would frame it this way. I want us to be very careful not to build out DEI in terms of personnel and resources faster than we build out our measurable objectives. So we know where we're going with these investments. I'm worried we're right at that point where the worry is legitimate.
I'll leave that to the committee.
Committee. Yep. And we'll certainly, you know, continue to have these discussions. And, you know, as I said before, hopefully we can vote at our next meeting. I think Sarah is going to put on the agenda to just make the entire committee, the subcommittee, and we can certainly, you know, look at times or meetings to make it accessible for everyone to be there.
Awesome. Any other questions about the budget?
No, I want to thank everybody for the work.
Yes.
Do it not only Jared and Ian, but I know people up and down the district.
A lot of people correct.
Getting it this far.
Buildings.
Yeah.
Yes.
Heads and all the department chairs. Yes.
All right. Onto Esser.
Again, I think we've referenced that in the slides. So you've heard what we're recommending right now. I don't know if we need more discussion on it tonight.
About the region. So in terms of the offsets for the FTEs, are, so are they split like you were describing the FTE at the region?
They are not for this year. So I think the language based one, our recommendation would be to fully fund it from Esser for this year, but probably to start weaning that down over the coming year or two. The counselor is fully meant to only be an additional position during the life of Esser because the building, the other, the new school will come online fairly simultaneously. So we expect to be able to consolidate and not have an actual additional FTE there.
Who's the current, so who do we have as an adjustment?
We do not have an adjustment counselor at the middle school.
Why wouldn't, it sounds like a very important thing that we need.
It is very important. I do think we have an opportunity when we consolidate schools to look at caseloads of counselors and work within that.
Oh, I see.
So you currently. Two buildings force a low case count. I'd rather not talk too much on.
No, no, but I would, I would see the skill set and the qualifications for adjustment counselor to be different than a guidance counselor.
Correct.
And I would look for some pretty.
Yes.
So that's why I'm thinking we need to maintain it. I understand what you're saying.
You would maintain it? I'm agreeing with you completely that you would maintain it. I think you've got room to look at consolidation of the, of the traditional guidance counselor positions.
We're already committing to that thought. I'm just, we've got to be careful about our piles of money.
There's things I can tell you offline that I.
No, no, I know, but I.
Like that'll inform the.
I know, but we, we've committed to the 570 something savings.
Correct.
And that we're trying to, being asked to actually.
Right.
You know, hand that back.
Discussion isn't part of that, just so you know that.
Well, I, you know, whatever happens down the road, I think we, as, to avoid that cliff.
Right.
Um, I, I think that one of these two should come off and go into the budget. So whatever you think, I mean, if you think the language based special educate educator at CMS is going to definitely stay, it sounds like it should.
Why are we looking to move this from Esser into the?
Because it's not Esser, it's not going to stop. Like, we're going to keep that language based classroom, right?
Would you not want to offset some of those costs?
Well, I'm concerned that in 2025, we're going to have to add 500 K of.
So our recommendation, which we don't have mapped out for you on paper, would be to fully fund the language base now, but for FY24, partially fund it. And then for FY25, you're fully funding. So you wean your way into the FTE. I do believe you do not need to add in a, in a counselor position. When the grant winds down, I think you'll be okay to consolidate.
Because of the building consolidation.
Yeah.
Redeployment.
Yeah. We're trying to be thoughtful of that for sure.
Sure. And is there any other SCL or professional development? I just feel like we really need to look at some of the high needs beyond this work of our students and our teachers.
There, there's no question. Kristen meets with the mental health team regularly and our kids are showing us that they've been through a two years of trauma. Do you have any specific needs that are being identified?
Yeah, so like huge groups, we brainstormed all the preschool to grade 12, school psychologists, guidance counselors, adjustments counselors. We brainstormed kind of five areas and one is for trauma-based instruction to become a more sort of trauma understanding school site, both for COVID related, but also just.
In general.
In general, yeah. Another one is looking at LGBTQ needs within the school and the curriculum and culture. And then the cultural competency for students of color is another one. We wanted to look very carefully at worse and parents, you know, families that are splitting up or changing in, in different ways. And then what's the last one? Oh, kind of severe, we call it brain health, but looking at kind of severe mental illness within the positive.
But do, do you feel like you could use, how would you, do you need more funds to, to do that work is what I'm trying to say?
Nope.
Okay.
Fine. Yep. So what we do is take the whole district wide funds and split them up for the professional development paths that we do. And a lot of those are focused on cultural competency this year, a few on special education, like executive function and so forth. And next year I see that kind of reversed.
Do our teachers need help? And I mean that seriously in our staff.
Yeah. And, and we are having those discussions. Kristen and I were at the high school staff meeting this afternoon, starting some discussions of approaches, strategies. I'll be honest, they weren't going to cost us a penny. It was just to look at how we're operating and to, to regroup a little bit. In this case, in terms of structure and setting, you know, some, some of this is boundary setting. Some of this is nurture and care. Some of it's, you know, relationships, all those different layers. So that's the good news. A lot of that work comes with time. The cost is time, I would say, more than financial.
Yes, but that's what I'm saying. You might need money. Right. Yeah. So people willing to do work after.
Question for sure.
All right. So on to what's next. Any other, Esser?
No, thank you.
So I think we discussed, ask you for another week to just confirm thorough. We would not vote on the capital plan? Did I jump ahead and miss something?
Yes, that is what you mentioned earlier. There's a little bit there on the middle school, on the agenda.
The middle school.
I keep popping up to the regional agenda, sorry.
Financial offsets.
Yes, thank you. Anybody read that? I'll challenge you. So our assignments are. Loss efficiencies from building consolidation.
Right.
Am I correct? All of this has been discussed in various forums at this point?
Yes, and the numbers are there.
In a number of various forums, not as, some of it not as much directly here and some of it's follow up to what you discussed here. So this chart is what we worked on with a select board at the brainstorming for ways to pay for the middle school. Is essentially what this came from. So we've been asked to be able to respond to this prior, as part of the public hearing for the school on the 16th. So we wanted to be sure you looked at that. I assume we're going to, Cynthia, were we asked for written feedback to them or just a readiness?
Vote.
Discuss. We, are there any, are we like meant to sort of discuss or debate this at all?
Uh, whether I guess somebody has concerns about that number, I dug out a slide that.
If there's, wait, so I can, I'm sorry to interrupt. If there's not a number, does it mean it's already off the table?
There is a number for that particular thing. It's five.
Oh, no, I meant just, I'm sorry. I was speaking in general. Like of these line items. Sorry.
Correct. That, that means no, nobody knows.
Off the table.
Off the table. I don't know what that means.
Also, I guess I'll just get specific, like naming rights on buildings or rooms, there's no number. So I was just wondering, would that be something that we would debate? Like, for example, it's in our domain, I see.
Yeah.
That we would debate the merits of and potentially even prior to any of these meetings, you know, moving forward, we could take some things off the table.
Yes.
Potentially that.
No, no, no.
I guess I'm just being specific now.
No, no, that's fine.
Rather than asking a general question.
I think I got left as a task.
Yeah.
Research it.
Okay.
That kind of an open ended process.
And I, right, I get, I was just wondering like, when would be the time to?
Is it right now?
Yeah.
Is that your question? Is it tonight? Are we discussing this tonight?
Yes. If somebody, so that, this is how I would approach it. If somebody feels like they would want to pursue looking at naming rights, then I think we would say, we will take a look at it. And it sounds like a great idea and, you know, we'll just, so.
Conversely, could the conversation be, is it appropriate in a public building? Let's have no one pursue it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right.
That would be, that would be.
We know where I stand.
Could start with the easy one. That might be the easy one.
So should just keep going down. So we have that 548 number for the efficiencies that could go up or down. It's, it's at this point, I think it's really difficult to say a number larger or smaller than that. We'll just stick with that one. We do not have anything to do with the sale of the Peabody School. Just go next, our next one is a rental income. We were working on our facilities fees. I don't think we can predict that right now. Will there be some? Sure.
Will it be substantial? Probably not.
Yeah.
No, and our purpose is not revenue generation.
No, it's just, yes, protect our asset and yes.
Anything.
Um, self naming rights, I'm getting. Is anybody interested in pursuing as a significant revenue source in the school community?
I mean, I personally don't think it's appropriate to put names on a public building and sell it. And then I, there is in parentheses, it has Concord Ed Fund and that would not be under the Concord Ed Fund's mission to offset the cost of the building.
And we've got a policy we'd have to kick out as well.
Oh, yes, that would, yeah.
On that one. CPC, I imagine that we are a legitimate contender. The CPC committee reviewed their current asks, which were about equivalent with their available monies. They didn't have to turn a lot of people away. Now, this, this changes year to year.
Yeah.
So I don't think we're qualified to say what it should be, but we are certainly qualified to ask CPC, how receptive would you be? Because they do like that kind of dialogue.
Yep.
Early on.
And we'll have to look to our new, you know, for grants, either federal or local. I think they'd be in the sustainability arena. We could possibly get any, so.
tends to be where there's monies. Even then qualifying is tricky.
Yes.
Amanda can help us with that.
Things, it's a changing landscape from administration and so forth. So. So I don't think we have any really new information here. so I don't think we have any really new information here um, regarding our assignments. Did I miss anything?
Well, could.
Solar, I guess.
Yeah, that's where I was going to go. Could could somebody, uh, give us ballpark, uh, with solar design associates, uh, for example, uh, that has already done the first sketch of, uh, what might occur at the, at the site.
Yep.
Or solar collection.
Mm hmm.
Don't know. Might be.
No, it's just.
Easily at hand.
I think we all have the same questions. Is how's the, how are the finances going to work?
Right. But I'm asking down the road, imagining we had a hundred percent plus capacity on site to generate.
Yep.
Uh.
We have battery storage.
Would that provide zone with battery storage? What, uh, would be the potential annual savings?
A lot.
Yeah, but I, I think we could come up with something, you know.
I mean, right now.
Range of error because it's an estimate early on, but.
With that solid, they're saying we save a hundred and ten K.
Say again?
Without solar, it's a hundred and ten estimated.
Yeah, we did get updated information from S M M A the other day.
It's a little higher than what we had estimated by a hundred percent or so, right?
I had about sixty five.
I thought you had like fifty four in there.
Oh, sixty.
So does that effectively change the five forty eight?
I don't know.
Not go into a separate row.
Yeah, I given the five forty eight is projecting so far out.
Yeah.
I'd be hesitant to increase that savings number right now. I'm hopeful and expect we're going to be able to as we get closer and closer to a a new building and actual budgets that correlate, but seems it's all soft because it has to be.
Oh, yeah, it's all projection.
Yeah.
But the, the solar, if it covers, you know, another large amount.
Well, people do I R O I calculations on every, every solar project that they do, even homeowners.
Yes, they do. I mean, been part of that. Um, so I, I think because the FinCom wants us to vote that number, I think we should lean to the conservative side for now. And that a, a future school committee can continue to have this conversation, I think, constantly about, you know, where we're headed as we're proceeding with getting more information down the line. But I, I think I would agree that, um, you know, we just, we need more information about the solar project, the timeline. Um, and, you know, there's, there's so many variables, you know, the kilowatt cost charged in five years from, you know, Concord Minnesota Light Plant. So, um, you know, I hope that these all numbers all head in the direction where the everybody will be saving a great deal of money. And I think that's the intention. But I do think FinCom requested that we vote a number. I'm just not, the part I'm a little uncomfortable with is, you know, we're voting, uh, a current school committee in nineteen, in twenty twenty one, a, a number that isn't going to be real until twenty twenty five.
We can vote to.
Encourage.
Or to, uh, endorse a rec, endorse an estimate.
Mm hmm.
Uh, but we can't bind a future school committee.
No, no. Good try. So, um, maybe I would look for a motion to endorse the estimate of five hundred and forty eight thousand savings that we hope to be recouped in the first full year of operation of the. I don't know.
I'm not sure either.
I, I don't know that we can vote on this. I mean, how are we voting on something that?
Well, I think.
We're simply voting on a number we want them to use, not a number that a school committee has to pay attention.
That's exactly it.
The building committee.
Right.
Uh, you're just playing around with.
The words.
Right.
Uh, the school committee, uh, could, could vote to, uh, reaffirm the twenty eighteen estimate of, uh, operational savings, uh, in the neighborhood of five hundred and forty eight thousand dollars annually.
Mm hmm.
Uh, when the new building, uh, replaces the two current facilities.
Okay.
We're just saying we still like the number. We gave them the number once. We're giving them a number again. All we're doing. That's all we can do.
Yep.
Is we can give them any number we want, but it's a number that is simply an estimate that doesn't, uh, uh, bind a future school committee.
Oh, no, no. And it was used at town meeting, so.
Yeah.
As a number.
So then what, how would we word it?
The Concord School Committee, uh, reaffirms the, correct me if I'm wrong, twenty eighteen.
Mm hmm.
That right?
Yeah. Estimated, estimated operational savings for a new Concord Middle School.
Nineteen.
Uh, as compared to the operating costs.
Twenty nineteen.
It was twenty nineteen? Okay.
Prag, okay. So pragmatically, what is that doing? It's just.
We're reaffirming what we said at a town meeting.
We're saying, we're saying use that number.
About it.
Yeah. We used it at a town meeting as a fact.
Oh.
So I think we, we have to.
Was an estimate. Right?
But as, yes.
Um.
We're still saying that word.
Right.
Yeah.
Um.
Or we're not, we're not going to put on the slide for town meeting, I guess. We already did. So kind of, we're kind of committed to it.
I mean, there, there's always words we use around numbers in town meeting to say this is our best.
Yes.
Yeah, our best estimate.
Plan, you know, whatever.
And right now I think it's.
I agree with the spirit of it fully, what we're doing in the same way. You know, it reminds me of like when we asked to memorialize kind of the way we, you know, all the things that we included, for example, in the teacher's contract. So that future school committees would have robust context
Right.
as they embark on their duties in their whatever fiscally or so. I feel like the spirit of those things are the same. And I, and I like that. I just, I don't.
Her hand up whenever that.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I think we should finish our discussion and then, yes.
Yeah, like so. So again, I fully endorse the spirit of it. I just, why are we, what are we voting? I, I just.
We're endorsing the number that we gave a town meeting as an estimate two years ago. The school committee did.
But if it's already been given, that's already been endorsed. So this, we're just continuing the same number.
I don't even think the school committee ever voted it. It was just presented as part of our presentation. I don't think they had this kind of a discussion, honestly, but I could go back and try.
Uh, we, we do.
Okay.
We, we.
But did you vote on anything? Right. The discussion I think is appropriate.
They went to town meeting.
Right.
Um, there are parties, uh, in town that would very much like this, uh, number to increase. Uh, we don't have that information at the present time.
No.
I think we would like it to increase, but.
Yes.
But it would not be wise to do it absent any supporting information.
Yes.
Uh, can we be optimistic? Yes.
Mm hmm.
We provide assurances? Uh, not yet. No. So.
And we think, I just, I, again, I love the spirit of it. And I don't know if I'm too in the weeds with word choice or, you know, semantics, but I just have to wrap my head around more the idea of what it's accomplishing other than a reminder, you know, what if.
I think it's showing our commitment.
It says we, we remain committed and we, and we haven't been able to move on it beyond the five forty eight.
Yeah.
Another possible approach is to vote to direct the chair to, uh, uh, correspond with town officials, uh, to the extent that, uh, we believe the uh, twenty nineteen estimate continued and remains a sound one. Period.
Did I just, as chair, give them that, that we agree that it's a sound estimate? Okay, the FinCom did ask us to vote, so we're, we're declining to vote.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be a way to approach it as well.
So I think we can communicate it without voting on it. I don't, I, I just don't see the necessity of actually taking a vote when it's information that.
Well, if it's included, for example, in our presentation at the special town meeting, I think that we should have voted on it. Cause it's a key sweetener to that presentation. So that's just my two cents.
I'm not, I'm not hesitant to, to vote. Uh, does it, does it bind us? No, we can only do what we can do.
No.
Facility.
Right.
Squeeze out every possible efficiency.
Exactly. And I hope it is higher.
And, uh, you know, somebody may well say that our estimate of twenty nineteen was a promise for twenty twenty five, and we'll have to say, uh, no, it was, uh, our best estimate. And we hope to do better. I, I, I don't, I don't think we want to make this more complex than it has to be. I do hear your concern.
Hmm.
I don't think this takes us anywhere. We, we aren't already now.
Yeah.
Really.
Yes.
But I.
You're putting a new date on it.
You, we're putting a new date on it. And who, who has asked us to vote on it?
FinCom.
FinCom.
They voted to ask us to vote.
They voted to ask us to vote, but we don't have to take a vote on that.
We could take a vote.
We could take a vote.
I think it would be very appropriate for us to do so if they expressly asked us, which they did.
Yes, they did.
I'm just going to say I'm not completely comfortable with taking a vote on it.
Well, if somebody makes a motion. So anyway, um, we could go back and I can just assure them that it's the same thing as taking a vote. If I go to tell them that the committee endorses the five forty eight without taking a vote, I just don't know really what the difference is.
Like, no one doesn't, I, I, again, I endorse it. It's, you know, the numbers came from a lot of research that again, was done with the best of everyone's ability to predict that kind of thing. So again, I fully endorse the spirit of it. I just, I don't know. Um.
They're expecting that the same, they're looking for a, a savings list. So they're looking at this as a savings. So that in twenty twenty five, when the building comes online, they expect to see at least a five forty eight reduction in our budget.
Now.
Just as long as we all remember, other things are going to have gone up by then, because you'll still have salary.
Right. I think that's where my, I get really worried.
Show the reduction. I'm just wanting to be, there's going to be a lot of moving parts. That's all.
Yeah.
Yes, we understand. We need to be able to show that.
Right, which I totally, I mean, I fully support that, but I'm just, it's just, I'm just questioning, why do we have to vote on it? I, I mean, I think we're going to find that money, but it, it's just a number that's been set there and and I think we can communicate it without.
Well, let's, let's channel the FinCom. Uh, Christine is right here, of course. Um, she can speak for herself. Uh, my interpretation is they want to show the town that they've done their due diligence to look for every offset possible. Uh, and for our part, we had our administration bring us this number uh, that we trusted in twenty nineteen, and they're telling us in effect, you can continue to trust it. And we don't have any substantive information to change that number for better or worse.
Yep. I, I don't disagree with that.
I don't think we should make this difficult.
No.
Because I think to, uh, predicate, uh, a resubmission of that number based on quote, no new information.
Yep.
Uh, is not, uh, a, a, a very big, big leap for us, very small step for us.
Hmm.
And, uh, and I think to not do it is riskier than to do it.
Yeah, no, no, no. I get, and I get that. I get, I guess. Let's talk about the words. Maybe, um, like what the, uh, the specifics of the motion or the, how you're going to say it.
I move that the Concord School Committee, uh, direct, uh, the school committee chair to communicate with the Concord Finance Committee to the effect that the twenty nineteen estimated operational savings of five hundred and forty eight thousand dollars uh, continues to be a sound estimate based on available information.
Okay. I'll need a second.
Yeah, I can, I can.
I have a second.
You officially second?
Oh, oh, I thought you said you seconded it.
I can't.
Oh. Um, I can second that.
Okay, further discussion?
I'm definitely more comfortable with the wording of that than to just be taking a vote to take a vote. I mean, it, it's really just, we're voting on you communicating back to the FinCom.
Yep.
And I'm much more comfortable with that.
But it's going to be on a spreadsheet that the school committee has endorsed this. So I was just like, it's sort of, you know.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I don't think anyone, of course we wouldn't endorse it. It's based on sound estimates.
All right.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
And Erin will record that motion as. Stated it. Sorry, Erin.
Yes, I have it.
All right.
Okay.
You're going to take a vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, we don't have to roll call.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it passed with our four person group. And let's just see. Uh, I'll take citizen comment at the end of the meeting. Let's just see what else do we have to do? I've lost my agenda once again.
We're done because we're not going to do, uh.
We're not going to do the capital plan.
Oh, yeah, although we're nearly ready, but.
Yeah, I just would like to get and throw a heads up. Um, okay. Uh, I'll take citizen comments at the end if there's any.
Your hand up still.
Who does? I don't, I lost my Zoom meeting.
Christine has a open mic.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to comment that I, I think Cynthia, that, that the discussion with Mary was around the way that we realized the five forty eight, right? So what we had proposed to you a couple of meetings ago was that we would adjust the guideline. So what, I thought that was the main purpose of our, of our discussion was we were trying to make sure that we could explain to the town how it was that the five forty eight would be realized. So your, your discussion is helpful. It's good to have the school committee reinforce it, but it was also this issue of how do we get it? How do we achieve it? And I, and I think what Mary had put forward at this meeting a couple of weeks ago was a, um, an adjustment to the guideline. And that's, I think, what we were after.
In twenty twenty five, though.
In, in, yes, in twenty, in the year, yes, in the year that the school becomes operational.
And I have, yeah, I have a feeling that the, the appetite to, it's just so hard to make that kind of a commitment to a future school committee. So I think, I appreciate the thinking. Um, and honestly, I hope that it's going to be a much bigger saving and adjustment to the guideline.
Okay, so.
Yep.
I mean, so, uh, that's fine. That's fine. So that's what FinCom voted. So again, you know, FinCom will change the same way the school committee will change.
Exactly.
But our recommend, you know, our recommendation is going to be, it comes off the guideline.
Yeah. And let's have, you know, that should certainly come up at the, uh, the hearing for sure, you know? That's what you all discussed. And I think just to be honest, but that's not what we voted tonight, obviously. So.
Yep.
I think that would have been a much more difficult thing for us to get through, honestly, trying to adjust a guideline for.
We'll know a lot more in twenty twenty five.
We'll know more in twenty twenty three, I hope, you know? So, you know, that it's, it's going to be a journey, that's for sure. Um, and I, it'll be an interesting and fun journey. Um, but you know, each, each year I think we'll have different and nuanced discussions about this, so, um.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Jared, thank you again.
Yes.
Jared.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.